This evening's work session is the first in a series that relates to parking with another work session scheduled with Rick Williams, our parking consultant, on December 12th to discuss the financial analysis that he has prepared. I am going to turn the work session over to Jim Bauer, the chairman of the Downtown Advisory Board, who works at Willamette University and volunteers a significant amount of his time to help downtown and the city. Jim?
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Council President Bennett, councilors, thank you for having us here tonight to begin this work session. I have to get one little point of clarification. When I want to switch slides, what do I do?
Wave your arms.
Yeah.
Can you do our arrow?
Perfect. Okay. Got a keyboard here I didn't know about. I'd like to, if at all possible, go through a quick PowerPoint presentation that I've prepared for this, try to take you through our thinking process. To begin with, I just wanted to make sure that we put this in a context, which is, we want this to be informational. We want to hopefully give you information, have you understand and process that information, be able to add more as we gain more information, so that you can make your own judgment about the information that we're receiving, as we are trying to do in the Downtown Advisory Board. This is a information gathering process. This is not a judgment process. So, to begin with, is this slide about why, what, and how? Why, how, how are we here? Why are we here? Revenue comes through an annual parking assessment. You see that as one of the bullet items here. It also comes through charging people for a permit or a monthly permit fee. Every year, we try to make recommendation to you about what the rates ought to be. Generally speaking, that rate information is about monthly parking fees. It could be about different ways that we imagine that we could manage the parking. For instance, last year, we were making recommendations about possibly changing and differentiating between parking garages, the rates. That was a recommendation that came to us in our 2007 parking study. In our case, because of this charge, our effort has been about how to have DAB members have a better understanding of how this works. This is a volunteer board. It's got a lot of things on its plate, and one of the challenges has been to have everybody understand the financial model and really what we're supposed to be doing related to parking. And so, it's almost a matter of self-discovery, given the turnover that we have in the Parking Downtown Advisory Board. Any questions? That's a pretty simple slide. Current minimum assessment is $197.20 for a business. As you know, that can go up substantially. So, why are we here? I mean, what is, what is this about? It's about verifiable planning data. As a Downtown Advisory Board, we've been making some assumptions over the years, certainly over the years that I've been involved with it, and then we realized we didn't have the right questions, and then we realized we didn't have the right information to come up with the right answers. We also realized there wasn't a written standard for how parking and parking garages present themselves to the community. In many respects, they're out there, but no one said these parking garages ought to be this or that. They ought to represent the city this way or that way. We should have a standard that says they should be good, better, best, at perfection, off perfection. These kind of issues all of a sudden have come to our attention. We're, we're realizing that in some respects, these are community asset that the community doesn't fully understand, and we didn't fully understand as a board. We realized we didn't have planning data that was verifiable, credible, and in turn useful, and I think that that has led to a lot of the confusion in the downtown community and in the community in general. There is a lot of lore out there about the parking, the parking garages. There's a lot of people who present themselves as experts and opinion makers, when the, often we didn't have information to say otherwise. So, the best opinion, the loudest voice, maybe the person who threw the most complicated stuff up, presented what could be the, the truth, but we didn't really know what the truth was. And that's what we're trying to find out. This sounds like something out of a Jack Nicholson movie. If you don't want to know the truth. So, in many respects, what we are looking for is a question of what are the things we need for making tactical decisions, and what are the things we need to make strategic decisions? An example of this, a tactical need is, what are we going to do for maintenance? How are we going to pay for maintenance? That strategic one is, do we need more parking? Do we have enough parking? What should we do with parking? And we need, we need information to gather enough other information, so that you all really can make good decisions. And we hope that we'll inform you with the best information possible. So, here are the questions that drove our effort, and if you read through them, I will just go along without going line by line. The entire community benefits from parking in the core downtown. We know that's true. We know that the downtown businesses really can't function without parking garages and parking and some kind of system. This isn't a situation where you can have a vital downtown and hope they find parking. You have to have a vital downtown that includes parking. And it's really, it's a fact, but you need to go back and track why it's a fact, and we've been working on doing that. We've learned that it's too easy to start a project, finish a part, a project, but not look out for its long-term viability. We've all seen examples of that. We realize that in the case of the parking garages and downtown parking, it would be easy to move forward with something else and not have looked at the situation that we're currently in and assessed it to the best of our abilities to, to understand what the hazards are, what the opportunities are. So, so we knew that we, before we could move forward with all kinds of ideas, like the Downtown Strategic Action Plan, some of the great ideas that have been developed, we need to go back to this and look at the information and know that parking is what? Okay, stable, good, great, but we need to know if it is anything in there, how, how it would move forward? How would it move forward in a sustainable way? Because it needs to be here forever. We know that. You can't have it downtown without parking. One of the things we learned is, we don't have a lockdown or an understandable and verifiable cost. So, we had all kinds of discussion, but we didn't have a plan to understand how to make the parking garages, for instance, last 20 years, or 30 years, or 40 years. And we certainly didn't have a plan to replace them. So, the only way we could start or get our arms around this was to say, we're going to continue them, because the cost of replacing them is beyond anything we want to imagine, I think, at this point. So, let's do the present value kind of idea here. Let's have a plan that would move forward, that would preserve them in a condition. That was really the question. So, when you see that long spreadsheet that is in about number three type or font, you'll see that it has a lot of assumptions in it. We'll come back to that at the end, but there are little, if you look at the bottom of the page, there's a lot of assumptions that we had to make. 3% cost of living increase. We got to the point where we really had to say that there are operational costs, aside from personnel costs, there are capital costs, and what we tried to do is build those into the spreadsheet. Not with any judgment, just, just plain simply about the buildings or about the parking. We realized that although we talk about this all the time, we didn't have credible information on the pattern of use. And by credible, I mean, every time a parking study was completed, there would be a whole group of people that say, but it's not that, but it's not that. But when you start to assemble five years of, of information, of data, it starts to be that, that is what it is. And we've learned, and this is where your support of funding these studies, we, I think we all don't want to have to fund a study, but when it comes down to looking at the parking situation, we need to study this and keep track of it, because it really is about both opportunity costs, and it's about money. One of the things that we looked at as DAB is, we didn't understand why we were making recommendations sometimes for what the rate increase should be. People, staff would say, this is what we should be doing, but as a community board that's supposed to be filtering, listening, asking hard questions, we didn't have enough information to give the right answers. So, it was our desire to get ourselves up to speed on this, so that we truly could look everybody in the eye and say, this is why we think it ought to be this, or this is why we think it ought to be that. There was too much of us just following through with the best information we had, which wasn't enough information. I'll try and speed this up. Why this evaluation? We learned from the Rick Williams study. We knew that the life cycle needed to be developed, so we did not, we didn't know how long in the future these buildings really were going to last. I think everybody was taken aback by the repairs we've had to make over the last three to five years. That was some major money. If we hadn't have had the resources, and we'd have had those kind of emergency problems, we'd have been in a pickle, and we don't want to be in that ever again. The community needs this way too much. Downtown Commerce needs this way too much to be in a situation that you can't predict the future. Just something you already know all too well, but I think it was part of our learning curve. There's a lot of pieces. There's a lot of cogs to this wheel. There's a lot of pieces that have to interconnect. You cannot run on one side of this thing without figuring out how it's going to come out on another side, and I think we're starting to get a pretty clear picture of all the pieces that have to be tracked in order to have good information about what to do for the future. And these are just an example of some of the things that, these pieces were all out there in some form, but not connected right. We didn't have a life cycle timeline. We did start to monitor use patterns, but we weren't sure what we were going to do with it. We hadn't set a baseline condition. We're now starting to track revenue sources based on something other than, oh, that's what the budget looks like. We're now in a situation of looking at revenues and expenses differently, because we know what it really means, and we're now in the position of tracking and assessing expenses as if this was money that we really understood where it went. I'm going to quickly go through this, because the next slide probably gives you even more information. But one thing we did find out of here, and you make note on the fourth down bullet on the right column, we, we learned soon that we don't need to build another garage in downtown Salem, at least for the foreseeable future. So, take that one off the table, because that was a looming threat that we had out there. We were worried about that. What if we had to do that? Where would we do it? How would we do it? We wanted to integrate the recommendations of, of the Downtown Parking Management Plan. We got partway there, but truthfully, staff spent more time implementing that than DAB did, and I think now we're together on that. The verifiable information in the top three columns or three bullets are something that we've spent a great deal of time on. What you'll see in the spreadsheet is that in order to smooth out the cost of this long term, keeping the garages in good position, it's going to cost roughly 100, or $400,000 a year. That's if you were to put this thing into play. So, that would, that, that could raise a lot of questions, how to do that, but mostly what we're doing is just assessing the information, not trying to make a judgment of how to do it, or what to do, or when to do. Roughly 1,500 underutilized parking spaces. I mean, we've got an asset. I mean, if you were, if you were Portland, and someone told you you had 1,500 downtown parking spaces underutilized, you'd immediately look at the opportunity cost of that. I think we should be doing that as well. I think the board does. I think any expert we brought in looks at that as well. I mean, it's in this, the Downtown Strategic Action Plan to take a stab at that for the north in the Marion Parcade. That's where a big chunk of them are. But the study did reveal that there are spaces in the parking garages throughout the downtown, and then there's some places that are at full capacity. It gets into big questions about the mix, and why, and what, but now we understand it enough to start looking at that in more detail. I'll just leave this. If there's any questions, we can come back to it. Here's what we didn't do. We didn't examine the parking garages as whole buildings. We examined them based on the program. So, there's always this kind of desire to do scope creep and to go off into areas. The leasehold is not in our responsibility area. There's plenty of people that would like to tackle that, but for the purposes of what we're trying to do, which is also to gain credibility with all of you about the information, we didn't jump into that area. It's a matter of perspective and how you want to look at the garages, but the way it's structured, that's not the issue that we're looking at. We stayed inside our district boundary. Really wanted to go look at a couple other parking garages in town. We wanted to look at things differently, but that's, again, not in our jurisdiction. We're not making a judgment about the financial model that's in place, or what one should be in place in the future, and we're trying to stay very disciplined about that. Dan?
Jim.
Oh, sorry.
Your, this may not be your wording, but I want to make sure I understand what sustainability of the programmatic parking asset.
It is my language, and I-
Okay. What is, what does that mean?
Yeah. So, so what we are worried about is, when you drive into the Chamacca Parcade, and you're in that part of the garage, that is the sustainable parking asset that we're worried about. We're not really worried about the leasehold in the basement or in the first floor.
Parking generator.
Right. And how that connects to the downtown, how that connects to the businesses, those are all, but we're not trying to do the same thing. And we're not trying to make a judgment that that's good or bad. We're just trying to stay away from that issue. And, and we're not avoiding it like, believe me, there's plenty of people who'd love to jump into that, but that's, that's, that's a different track. As you probably, well, as you know, leasehold contributes to the financial model of the garages. Capital renewal contributes through urban renewal, capital construction. So, when, when we had to fix the walls, that came from urban renewal dollars. That didn't come from the parking garage dollars. That was a capital project. We can't use urban renewal dollars to pay for ongoing maintenance and things like that. It has to be a project. So, for instance, things like elevators can be funded through urban renewal dollars, but they can't be funded through some of the other dollars. So, it's a little bit complicated about how you put the funding model together, which is why the issue of how do you smooth this out over time, so you have the money in place when you need it. We're trying to keep on track with that. So, the last slide really is, you know, what we hope to do. As Rick Williams will be coming to this group or to the council in December, I think you'll find his information illuminating. He will. He has enough good information now to draw, I think, conclusions that are close to being bankable. We still have work to do on DAB's part to look at revenues and expenses, and that's more about understanding what we call the levers for control, but those are not our levers. Those are yours, but we're trying to examine them, so that when you ask us questions, we, we have a good information on how to answer them. We, I guess I also want to say that we're not scheming toward paid parking. We're not scheming towards anything. We're just here to give you information about the parking garages of parking downtown in a way that is helpful. So, I'll, I'll conclude that part with, I guess-
Yes. I'm not sure if Counselor Bennett or Counselor Clem had their hand up first. Counselor Bennett, and then Clem, and then Dicky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim, I am glad to hear you're not scheming toward paid parking downtown. We'd be at cross-purposes at this point, I guess, until we, I guess, get all of your study information, and we'll find out.
We're still not scheming. Even when you get it all, you won't-
I hope you're not steaming that way either. I'm really intrigued by your decision to separate the leasehold from the park. I recall when those parking structures were built and how, how they fit together into the urban renewal plan for downtown. In fact, one of the developments, the Salem Center has a claim on a big, as I understand it and recall it, a big, a claim on a big chunk of the parking in the Marion Parcade. But also, as they did that, my recollection of the model was that the leasehold really was part of the parking garage. And I look at your expenses, and I got to believe part of the roof, part of the electrical, part of that, you know, as I look at each of the pieces, they must in some way relate to the people who are using that, that ground floor, including the city, which I assume is paying rent, into the parking system for the space that they're using.
For the parking spaces that they're-
Or for the, for the space they use in the leasehold.
They'd be paid into the leasehold fund for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At a market rate. So-
But not into the parking-
But if the roof leaks on top, and it comes down onto them, how are those costs then allocated? How are you guys doing that in this plan?
Well, first, it's not the jurisdiction of DAB to work on leasehold, so either our regulations off or-
No, you're correct.
Yeah, it is not in our purview.
Okay. So, they're just off the books?
Right. They're completely in a separate fund, in a completely separate area, and there's transfer costs going across. So, as DAB, and again, this is why we're not making judgments here about what is right or wrong, or, but you'll see the same kind of questions that rise up for any group that's considering that. But we are, we were very clear to not try and pull that in, because that would be moving towards conclusions. We're trying to present you the best information we have.
The, and I just alert you, the problem I have is whether or not this skews the numbers as a result. Certainly, I have no doubt about your costs and your cost projections and all that, but as we start looking at a holistic, particularly as you deal with the facility itself, with the lifespan, the sustain, I forget your term, but the-
Sustainability of it. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how you ignore the first floor of the whole thing.
Well, I guess as a, as a chairperson of DAB, I'd ask you, how are you, it, it is the structure we're given to-
Yeah.
-by you guys, so you're-
Well, I, I think at some point, the staff will have to kind of explain to us how, how leasehold integrates with the structure-
Yes.
...in order to guarantee the sustainable, the long-term sustainability of the building, because they clearly have a role. They're all under the same roof.
I think you're seeing what we see.
Yeah.
But, but we're also seeing that it isn't that simple, and-
No. It's part of, it's part of-
It won't be as simple as trying to fold that in.
Yeah. Hopefully, it'll be part of a whole solution. The other, the other thing I'm kind of curious about, did you take a look at how spaces are allocated in the structures? Will we see that at some point?
You'll see a lot of that in Rick Williams' study, and you'll see, I think, it'll, it'll bring you to some same, the same kind of questions that it brings for us, and it gets into an issue of, what is parking's purpose in downtown right now? Is it to, to provide parking for employees, or is it to provide parking for customers? Or how do you, how do you balance that? And how do you balance that against your need to bring in revenue, which the only two ways to do that is to raise the parking assessment, roughly speaking, the only two ways, raise the parking assessment, or sell more permits, which then restrains the number of parking spaces available to customers.
I guess the question is, to, to add to it, is, with 1,500 underutilized spaces, there's sort of nobody using it. I mean, you've got-
Right.
-employees, shoppers, and apparently, the biggest user, nobody in, in-
Roughly about, almost a third is the nobody in this category, yeah, above the downtown capacity.
And I hope that that's part of the, you know, part of the discussion, because I, it still strikes me that the Marion Parcade is really the, one of the real, and you know, I've talked about this-
Yes.
...is one of the real linchpins for development north, in north downtown, is having this huge surplus of free, right now, free parking at the edge of a redevelopment area.
Premium free parking.
Yeah. It really is quite a remarkable asset. I-
I think it was-
Did you guys get a look at the concept that the council had looked at over time of allowing commercial development on multi-stories, using up part of that parking resource as for students out of Western Oregon, some of these other schemes that have come along? Did you get a look at that?
I've seen that project. We haven't reviewed that project as a part of our review of the capacity, but I think in, the question that you'd have to ask yourself, I think, would be, you know, what project will raise tax increment in that area? So, I mean, can, can you get a burst or a boost out of that capacity? I mean, we always are hoping for a four-to-one ratio, much like the Broadway project, and so, you know, for every dollar of public investment, you might get $4 of private investment, and then you also get the tax increment value of this, and then, of course, the Verve. So, we're hoping to see that out of the action plan. But the specific project of the adding floors to the parcade, we didn't consider it, but we, I think Downtown Advisory Board clearly sees the opportunity of Marion Parcade as a, I mean, and I think the community sees that as well.
Great. Thanks. Thank you. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim, the, I find the spreadsheet to be very useful.
Good.
It's a good asset management approach, which is what the city is starting to do with all of its facilities. And so, it, I appreciate the work that went into it. I, I look at the big numbers the next two years out, and it's, based on what I see, there are expenses for a variety of things for all three parades, but I essentially see this next year being elevator upgrades for Chamacca Parcade, and then in '13, '14, essentially, new elevators for all three parades.
Yes.
I mean, the Sky Bridge at Chamacca, and then elevators for Liberty and Marion. So, those are the big-ticket items that I see. And that leads me to the question of, when we, for the last X number of years, we've often asked the question, why do we have so many empty parking spots in the parades? And this gets to Counselor Bennett's point about the, the gold mine and free and available parking in a Marion Parcade, but how do we get folks to use it? Two or three, wow, maybe five years ago now, we answered that question by improving the lighting, improving security, cleaning them up, making them shopper-friendly. And so, we've done that now. What, will the Williams study, or will this completion of your work help us answer that question? How we get folks into those parades, particularly where there are a lot of spots not being used?
There are, it's going to be, obviously, a number of issues, and we, we just have a parking survey out right now that we hope will, will help us with some more information. I think we're going to have to keep surveying people. One of the ways that we've got to look at this is, we have a bunch of empty spaces in downtown. Not parking spaces, but also lease spaces, and you have, you have opportunity in downtown that as you start to grow with that opportunity, second-floor development, more robust development, a lower vacancy rate, you'll fill in some of those spaces. What we have seen, and I think the parking study will reveal to you, that there's been a change in some of the use patterns, so people are using parking more in the evening. The, the turnover rate is good for parking on the street. I think that one of the things that we might be looking at, and we'll be coming back to you, is, is, is all the parking in the right place in the right way? And this gets back to a question of the ratio of employee parking to customer parking, and what we're, we've been tuning in on is the habits of people who are parking, and the Rick Williams study does help us with that.
Okay. And that gets to the issue that I'm looking for, and that is, we're spending a lot of money on elevators and Sky Bridge.
Right.
If I knew I could spend that much and fill up those parking spots and, and up that revenue to help complete that, so, before I get convinced to vote yes on spending money on elevators, I'm going to want to make sure that our strategy of actually using our facilities-
Yeah.
...is in front of that, not, I understand the facilities maintenance piece, but really, we still haven't answered this question, so I look forward to it.
Yeah. Good. It's good advice.
Thank you.
We're, we're hoping that you'll look at both pieces, because I think they're both needed.
Counselor Dicky?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for that presentation. That was really helpful. I want to, just some clarification on those 1,500 underutilized spaces. Does that include both the paid parking, like employee parking, as well as customer parking in the parades?
I'll, I'll let Cherie talk to, about paid parking- I'll let Cherie talk to, about paid parking, but it's a combination. But most of the paid par, I mean, we could just keep selling parking permits downtown, but there's a question of whether that's always the right method here.
Cherie Wargren, the utilization survey that we do once a year, Rick Williams comes out and basically counts during peak hours, how many stalls are empty? That's what the 1,500 is based on. So yes, it would take into consideration those of us that are monthly permitters, guests, shoppers. So yes, it's all-inclusive.
So then, I don't, maybe this isn't in the scope of this study, maybe it will be coming out later, is when we look at and we say we have 1,500 underutilized spaces and maybe we could capture that cost, is growth accounted for? Either growth by business growth, where you might have those would-be paid spaces, or just population growth where we would need the extra capacity downtown? Has that been factored in, or will that be a part of another study?
I think, and this is not the final conclusion, but the discussion among DAB is that we have enough capacity to not worry so much about the growth in downtown. We need to, I mean, let's grow, let's get everything going, because there's plenty to cover. We do have a big hole, a big piece of those spaces is in the Marion Parkade, as we were just discussing. And so, you fill that, making sure that you fill it with something that's productive and useful, and you're really gonna have a catalyst for some more change. But in the rest of them, what you, you probably want to have the problem of filling up the 500 or 600 empty spaces, and then looking at how the spaces are allocated so that you can tune that up. I mean, right now, it's, you got a capacity, you kind of throw everybody in wherever you can, but that may not be the best way to manage it. It just happens to be the way we do and we have this much capacity. Do you understand what I mean? Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Are there other questions from Mr. Bauer? Well, Councilor Claussen.
Thanks, Mayor, that was kind of late on my part. So I'm really new to this, Jim, so I appreciate all the thought that DAB is putting into it. My wife used to work downtown at Nordstrom's and she walked right past the front of that Marion Parkade every single day to go to work. And I was always like, why can't you just park in there? What do we do? Can you lease spaces in there as an employee downtown, or can you not? I'm so new to this, I don't even know.
Yes, in that particular case, we sell, and this is probably, down the road, gonna be a problem for us, but we have like bulk permits that we're selling and kind of, you all come kind of permitting. And when you think about using that for some strategic purpose, that may not be the best practice. But I, Cherie might be able to answer more about, you know, if you want one there, I probably could make one for you, you know, the revenue model. Well, I mean, there is, there is a, I mean, I think you'll see the same thing we're worried about is, you could keep selling permit parking for a long time and keep adding to your revenue model and lose the economic development model or the support to the businesses for customers, meaning that you can't, you can't, you can't put enough emphasis on how people's behavior is shaped by whether that parking space is there. And if it gets filled by a monthly parker, who, then, then they do start looking at it differently. Their pattern of behavior changes. So the balance of how we manage the parking in the structures is something we're gonna have to start looking at more strategically. That was part of those COGS. They've been kind of out here and out here, but not connected and figuring out how they work together.
As a quick follow-up on that, where my mind was going on that is, very anecdotally, I mean, I have no scientific evidence here, but when I'm downtown, I hear a lot of people, oh, I gotta go move my car, it's two hours, I gotta go to another block, you know what I mean? Because, you know, a lot of the downtown businesses are in and out a lot, and so they don't end up going and parking all day. And I'm just wondering, you know, if you could, if we could fill it up with the employees, maybe that frees up more street parking. Just kind of thinking out loud, I'm sure Rick Williams' report will fill some of that, more light on that, more scientific than my anecdotal.
He will, and he's, I think you'll find his information very interesting. One of the points I wanted to make, which I didn't highlight it, was on our, what we learned. Enforcement for employee parking on street needs review. It's on our, it's on that page, what we studied, what we learned. I think we're, although we have reviewed enforcement, and I think there's a lot of information that's been gathered, we may have to study that whole issue of employee parking on the street and the enforcement tools that we have. There's a lot of anecdotal information that says employees are parking on the street. Rick Williams' study does not support that, based on the information I saw. But if that, anecdotally, the case, we still need to keep looking at it, because there may be a hole in the information gathering or something like that. But employee parking, I mean, think about how hard this is. These are employees of the businesses that we're trying to support. So how do you get the right balance here?
I have just a couple of comments, and one is a question, maybe more to staff. Have we tried any other mix of incentives to bring people into the parking garages? We have rules about where they can park and the cost of the permits. But have we thought of any sort of a package program where a person comes downtown and parks in the parking structure, but doesn't have to pay a parking fee, but receives something that's an inducement to get into the parking structure as opposed to parking out on the street? That's what we're trying to do, is to draw people into the parking structures.
Are you asking about customers or employees, Mayor?
Well, I suppose first about customers, but I'll make the point. If we start to recognize that the employees downtown are also customers of each other's businesses and can be customers of each other's businesses, and really be thinking of them as, you know, feet downtown, rather than, do you work here or do you shop here? Maybe you do both. So I guess my question is for both.
And I think it actually goes back to Dan's point as well about, is there another thing that you could move this with? I don't know what it will be, but those are, that's a good way to look at it, is.
In answer to the question, and I think why Ms. Wargren was asking that question, is it's been a concern of council for some time and downtown businesses to not have business employees parking on the street and taking the spaces for customers. And so, we did put some incentive methods into the system in regard to pricing to really encourage lower permit prices for employees at different areas. So we have done that. We have not had a package where if you park in a parking garage, you receive some additional benefit or incentive, because we just have not had the staff to track who parks and who doesn't in parking garages, or how we would give that incentive. It's one of the difficulties we have when we have free parking everywhere, is it's really hard to come up with an incentive. Rick Williams, when he's met with the agency board before and the work that he's done with staff, really recommends that pricing is a very strong incentive. We're also looking at different policies, and this is an issue, as you all know, that we've spent a lot of years struggling with finding the right answer. And I think we're getting closer now with Downtown Advisory Board's good work.
Councilor Clem?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Linda sparked a question, and that is, have we ever looked at just getting rid of the parking assessment that we charge businesses? And, you know, looking at, not eliminating the free parking, I'm not going there, but, you know, businesses pay a parking assessment. And then their customers, if they don't have a free block face, or a block face with free parking, also end up paying, or end up paying for parking in the meters. And so, the question is, how do we, are there ways to change that model? We've been chasing this for years, and I don't know that I've ever looked at a couple of options where we sort of mixed and matched how we changed our pricing. Because I think that was one of the thoughts that Mayor Peterson is well-bringing out, and it's, you know, if we always do what we've always done, we'll get what we always got. And so, I'm wondering in Rick Williams or DAB's modeling, or considerations and good recommendations, that, you know, maybe we just, we need to just like look at this whole thing differently. I work a lot in downtown Portland, I tell you, parking, you know, there's lots of cars, lots of people, lots of mass transit, which works well. And not that Salem needs to be like Portland, I hope not, but parking just isn't a problem.
Right.
I'm in and out as fast as I need to, a block away from the business I need to go. So I just would encourage that we would take a look at maybe, why don't we sort of look at not only the employees and the customers that park, but really engaging with the downtown businesses as to, you know, they're just paying that parking tax, and I'm not so sure that they're necessarily seeing the value of it when their customers are complaining about parking or.
Right, we've had some discussions at a staff level, but in the time I've been here, I don't believe the agency has considered that. I think this is, I think the advisory board is on the path and staff is on the path of looking at the mix of revenue sources. I think what's important to remember, though, is you can't just, you don't make the pie bigger by taking one resource from like leasehold, for example, and moving it to something else because it leaves a hole in what you're supporting right now with leasehold revenue. So it really is always a question about who pays and how much they pay. What are, what would the permit costs be then if we didn't have the parking assessment? And is that realistically? So it really is a financial model as, as well as what you think the market will bear as we go forward. But I think this comprehensive look is what we've needed, and I think we're making good progress here.
Thank you. Are there further questions? All right, well, I think our time is about up, and we thank you very much, Mr. Bauer, for coming down, and for our staff who prepared the reports and assisted with this presentation. And thank you for all of the work that you're doing to make downtown stronger and better. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pass that information along to our board, and I think, thanks to the staff publicly for their support.
Do you have any board members here this evening that you wanted to introduce?
We do, Mr. Paul Geller is right here.
Paul Geller, hello, Paul, thank you for coming down tonight.
Is there anybody else here?
Other board members? Well, do pass along our thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
The recorder will please call the roll.
Commissioner Tesler?
Absent.
No, absent. Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Claussen?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Cannon?
Absent.
Oh, he is.
He is.
He's here via telecommunications. Commissioner Clem?
Here.
And Chair Bennett?
Here. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the Salem Housing Authority? Okay. Councilor Nanki, could you give me a motion on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, I would move the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Councilor Nanki, seconded by Councilor Thomas, to move the consent calendar in discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Information reports. Andy, do you have any information?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to comment on one aspect of the program management report. At the very back of that document, I included a brief article about the federal appropriations process and the current status of that. And just wanted to mention, really briefly, there are three primary programs that provide almost 90% of the resources for SHA. They are Public Housing Operating Funds, which are what they say, they help operate the public housing. Public Housing Capital Funds, which are the capital dollars that keep the public housing in good physical repair. And finally, the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, which is our Section 8 program. The first two programs I mentioned appear to have proposed cuts anywhere from 8 to 15% per program. The third program, the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, though there aren't cuts proposed for the assistance that we provide to the client, which is their housing subsidy payments, but there is a substantial cut proposed for the administrative fees that would be paid to the Housing Authority in order to deliver those client housing services. And so, I point that out, there is an attachment to your program management report, and look forward to any conversations or any input that you'd like to provide. We have provided sign-on letters to our Oregon delegation over the last several months about supporting full funding for the housing community development programs, which are, include the public housing programs, and we'll continue to do that. And if there's some broader leadership from the city on this, or from the Housing Authority Commission on this, we're happy to relay that to the delegation as well.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Councilor Dickey?
Yeah, I think you actually may have just answered my question by your statement, but I'm gonna ask anyway to make sure I'm clear on it. So, because the stats that you gave us are from the NARO, is that what it's called?
NARO.
NARO. But you, you're also working on your own as well to secure some of those appropriations for the Housing Authority in Salem?
So NARO is the preeminent, I would say, the preeminent redevelopment and housing authority trade association, if you will. And there's 1,000 housing authorities across the country that are members. And so, NARO's in DC, and they, part of their, part of the reason we, why we're members and we pay their dues is for them to undertake the federal government kind of, well, assessment and keeping, you know, representing the interest of the housing industry in general. So what this chart, the good thing about this chart is it shows historic, 2010, 2011, and that shows the Senate Committee budget and the House Committee budget. And then, of course, the NARO column is really, and HUD did this assessment years ago, what is full funding that it would take to completely support the programs that are in place in housing authorities right now? And so, the NARO column is really about full funding. And so, you can look at several different slices of political decisions that are being made. I think it's safe to say that the final appropriation for any one of these line items is not gonna be greater than the greater amount between the House and the Senate. I also think it's probably not gonna be lesser than. But in the middle, you'll see some pretty substantial cuts. And we are engaged through the State Housing Authority Association, as well as NARO, as well as with our delegation, to try to make sure that they understand the impacts of these proposed cuts and what it does to the needs of our clients.
Sounds like you kind of have all the bases covered in that area, so you're trying to use all the angles that you have to.
We're trying very hard.
Work on this situation, thanks.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have no special orders of business, no unfinished business, no new business. Councilor Nanki, a motion to adjourn?
You can just, you can just.
Ah, just adjourn it, okay. No objection? Last time you objected, so I want to make sure you don't object. Okay, you're adjourned. Just like Thor. Lightning, lights, flame. What did I do last time? Something. Something you didn't like. You still had to do. Yes.
14th. We will start with our Urban Renewal Agency meeting. In our opening exercise, we called order, and we asked the recorder to call the roll.
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler is absent. Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Clausen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Cannon?
Yes.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. And welcome to Councilor Bob Cannon, whom some of you may not realize is with us on the phone. And welcome, Bob. Nice to hear your voice.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's a long line. Okay.
Yes.
All right, we're going to go right into our action items. Member Bennett, do you have, oh, all right. I see that we have someone signed up to speak. All right. Warren Bednarz has signed up to speak this evening on Agenda Item 4.3A and 4.3B. Welcome, Mr. Bednarz.
Thank you. If this is normal, I would say, my name is Warren Bednarz. I reside at 3435 Eldorado Court South here in Salem. I am Chair of the West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board, and I'm here tonight to support Items 4A and 4B, both of which are up for consideration this evening. Our committee has gone back several times on these issues and looked and re-looked at what's been, what we're doing in West Salem, and we encourage you to vote yes on both of these items. I could comment that we had the Sustainable Cities Initiative, the students that came from the University of Oregon. We had talked about on Edgewater that there was an infill between Patterson and Rosemont. If we could get businesses at either end, it would infill towards the center. One of the purposes of that lighting is that we have connectivity, we have good pedestrian safety in that area, but now we have a medical facility at one end. We certainly have a good development on the Rosemont or the west end of Edgewater and Second Street. It's a natural thing to extend the light the full distance as we start to move forward with more redevelopment in that area. So, I'm, again, I'm just here to support it, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
We appreciate you here. Thank you. All right, Member Bennett, do you have a motion? I do, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following polls, 4.3A and 4.3B by Councilor Clem. All right, it's been moved by Member Bennett.
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Thomas to approve the consent, the consent calendar with Items 4.2A, 4.3A and 4.3B polled by Councilor Clem. Councilor Clem, would you, oh, call a motion first?
Consent.
All right, all those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilor Clem, would you like to speak to your polls?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Poll, Item 4.3A, the amended grant agreement providing funds for Union Street Railroad Bridge to Glenn Creek Road Northwest Trail. I move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Councilor Clem and seconded by Counselor, who was that, Nanki, to approve the count, the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
Yes, thank you. This is an item we saw council, or the agency voted on, on October 10th, 2011, wherein cost of increase to complete this trail that uses state, city and, and agency and federal funds. I won't speak to that again, but I will indicate that we're not voting another $16,000. This is the same vote we took previously, and my complaints were registered then as well, but would urge support for this as we've considered this matter previously.
Thank you. Is there any further business to come before the agency? Councilor Bennett?
We vote on these, we need to vote on these too.
Oh, we have to vote on this one separately, sorry. All right. It's been moved by Councilor Clem and seconded by Counselor Nanki to accept the staff report for Item 4.3A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And Councilor Clem, did you want to speak to your other poll?
Yes, I would move staff recommendation for Item 4.3B.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Clem, seconded by Counselor Nanki. Councilor Clem, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is to use $135,000 in the West Salem Urban Renewal Area Opportunity Funds to complete the pedestrian scale lighting to the pedestrian crossing projects on Edgewater. I think this is an important distinction to know that the, it's one thing to add cross, crosswalks or crossing locations and make other improvements, but without lighting, I'm very concerned that Edgewater, particularly the middle part of Edgewater, will still be a dangerous place, particularly during early limited visibility parts of the year. So, while I'm, I'm a little concerned that the funds are essentially being mostly used in the opportunity fund, I don't think we could do the pedestrian crossing project without this lighting. So, I'm glad to see this project move forward in that regard. I just want to remind fellow members of council that one of the ultimate uses of, or goals of the Edgewater area is to be a walking-friendly business area. And so, it sort of makes sense that if we're going to provide the crossing locations, we need to provide the lighting that goes along and makes it safer for people to cross. So, another step forward for West Salem, particularly in the Edgewater area, the redevelopments are happening on a, on a great scale. Keep them coming. I think we're going to have more reasons to stay on our side of the river and shop there. Sorry, downtown. But West Salem's downtown on Edgewater, and Wallace is actually part of the whole downtown core, and as Councilor Bennett is already active in the West Salem area, I think this will be good for downtown as well.
Thank you very much. All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept staff report for, to, on Item 4.3B. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. I see that we have no unfinished business tonight. We have no public hearings or new business. Oh, I'm sorry. Member Bennett? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I want to just take a look for a minute at one of the information reports. Oh, all right. It's 5.3B. Okay. 5B. This is the demonstration program criteria, Madam Mayor, and I would, I have a motion on this. I would like to refer Jim Bauer's email to staff. It included, if you had a chance to look at your packet, it included a whole series of questions regarding the council's motion of a few weeks ago regarding this, this issue, and I think posed some really interesting questions about the demonstration block program, how it would work if it isn't allowed to include some, I got off on my discussion there, I didn't mean to do that.
Second.
Thanks.
Do you need a second?
And then I'll finish my story. Yes, all right. Go ahead. It's actually a pretty good story, that this, this, I think, would give us a chance to get some answers to the questions, as well as hopefully have some proposed policy considerations around this. Again, we got off on this issue around nonprofits and downtown demonstration block program, and judging from Mr. Bauer's email, we may have taken a couple of turns into the weeds we didn't mean to take, and I'm hoping we can get back a policy recommendation from staff that kind of gets us back on track on this issue. Okay. Now, I need to be clear, are you making a motion regarding this information report? Yeah, I'd like to refer it. Let me try it again, Madam Mayor, because I, I think that did get confusing. Refer Jim Bauer's email to staff for both answers and any policy recommendations they have in response to it.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Member Bennett, seconded by Member Clem, to refer Mr. Bauer's letter to staff for them to come back to council with further reports and suggestions. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Most, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. I see no further business coming before the agency, and we are adjourned. This is the meeting of the Salem City Council on November 14th, 2011. Will the recorder please read the roll?
Councilor Bennett?
Here.
Councilor Tesler is absent. Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor Clausen?
Here.
Councilor Dickey?
Here.
Councilor Thomas?
Here.
Councilor Cannon?
Here.
Councilor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. Our opening procedure now is to ask councilors for council comment. Do council, do any councilors have comment that they would like to share this evening? All right, we'll move right along. I've asked our city manager, Linda Norris, to discuss the additions, deletions, et cetera, that you would find on your desk with the yellow cover sheet.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is regarding 8A, excuse me, and this is a report from staff that relates to the number of remonstrances received to the Economic Improvement District, I guess, at 5:00 PM this evening. The second one, 8B, is written testimony on City Council Policy C1 related to transient occupancy fund allocations, and that's from Kathy Cervantes. And then, 8C, we have some additional written testimony from the Grant Neighborhood Association regarding the revocation of multifamily housing license for the Coonsy Apartments located at 1360 to 1390 Liberty Street Northeast.
Thank you very much. Councilor Bennett, would you like to, no, wait a moment.
Do you have any public comment? Anyone signed up for the public comment?
We're not there yet.
Okay, our next item of business are reports from boards, commissions and committees, and presentations by outside agencies, and I believe tonight, we have a report from the Salem Social Service Advisory Board on the Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network Program. And who is with us this evening?
Andrew Lane, I'm the Executive Director of the Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network. We're located at 1055 Edgewater Street in West Salem.
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and councilors, it's great to be able to report to you what we are doing at the Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network with the funds that are provided through the city to help with case management for families that are homeless, that stay in our program. Our program's a little unique for a homeless shelter in that families stay in congregations in our community. This, this current year, we have 14 congregations that open up their buildings, and volunteers come in, prepare meals, and share those meals with the families that are staying with us. They, they all have children that are staying with us, and, and people stay with us for about an average of 30 days. So, our program through, sorry, through those congregations is serving about 40 to 50 families a year. So far, in this congregation, in this fiscal year since July, we've served about 28 individuals. It's been a little bit of a slow moving people through our program this summer, but I wanted to share sort of some exciting news in terms of the delivery of some of the goals in the plan to end homelessness. One of the, one of the goals is to break down the stigmas and to help you, and from our standpoint, to help people engage with families that are homeless, to engage on a personal level. It helps break down the stigmas that people have. It helps people, meet people face to face and understand the, the issues and the troubles that they're going through while they're in our program. We've added two more congregations this coming year into hosting, so we'll have 16 congregations. What that means is this year, there'll be over 1,000 volunteers in our community that take some time during the year to serve a meal, to play with some kids in, in a one-on-one, well, not one-on-one, but in a small environment, work with four families at a time. So, it's a very wonderful intimate way for people to get to know each other. One of the expressions of this that I think is great is last month, we had a wedding, and in that people poured in, donated goods from wedding dresses and tuxedo, wedding cake, a reception. I played music for the, to bring the bride down the aisle, and it was a wonderful way that multiple congregations and lots of volunteers came together to help a young couple that moved out from Wallace Marine Park into our program. And we're hoping this next week that they're moving into an apartment of their own. So, it's just a wonderful expression of how people can come together and help out people in need. So, if you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for bringing us a heartwarming story.
Welcome.
We appreciate that, and we appreciate the work that you are doing. Do we have questions from any of the councilors? Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If someone wants to volunteer to be one of your volunteers, how do they find you?
You can look on our website at SalemIHN.org, and there is a way to contact our office directly, or there's also a list of all the congregations that host, and you can contact them. It may be the congregation you're a part of, or it may be in your neighborhood and an easy place to volunteer.
Wonderful. Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just can't help myself. Thank you, Andrew, for good, great work with keeping people, giving them hope. What are the items you need? We're outfitting families, diapers, food?
Everything you use in a household, we, that are consumables, we need. So, diapers are used.
Paper towels, everything.
Paper towels. When a family moves out, they often have very few household goods, so plates, silverware, cups, bedding, like pillows and comforters and sheets, all, all can be used.
Where do they bring them to? What's the address?
You can bring it to, in West Salem, on Edgewater, at 1055 Edgewater. You can bring it by our day center and make a donation.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Sometimes it's dark over there.
Further questions?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, Andrew, for coming.
Thank you.
Again, we appreciate the work you're doing. All right. We have public comment, and we have several people who've signed up. All right, I'm going to read off a couple names at a time, Dan Motley and Sam Skilleren. Maybe if you want to do opposite podiums, or stand in line, or how you like to do that, just to kind of speed things along.
Guess I'm the only one up here now.
Yes, welcome.
My name is Dan Motley. I live in Ward 6. I'm here to speak again with my support for Item 112A on the agenda night, Councilor Clausen's item in discussion regarding delaying the implementation of the backflow fee until 2013, if that's soon. I hope that the rest of the council and the mayor will support his actions, recommendations and comments also. I've already submitted written comments on the item and am here to answer any questions about my comments, if there are any. And to state that today, I noticed that our local newspaper ran an online survey, and 70-some percent of the respondents favored delaying the implementation of that fee until 2013. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Motley? All right, thank you for coming down. We appreciate your appearance. Sam Skilleren, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, city councilors. I come with two hats on.
I come with two hats on tonight. I'm Sam Skilleren. I live at 1255 Cottage Street in Great Grant Neighborhood. And one of my hats is as co-chair of the Neighborhood Association, and the other hat is as a board member of the Interfaith Hospitality Network. First, with my grant hat, I just want to bring kudos to the city staff and city council for being such a great partner for us in Grant Neighborhood. I want to salute Counselor Bennett, who makes almost every one of our meetings, Rachel Dixon and Kirsten Madigan from city staff for the great job they do keeping us informed. We do the work, but boy, they're partners and liaisons for us that are just par excellence. And they connect us with anything we need to be connected to. And I'm assuming and hoping the other neighborhood associations also have, take advantage of that same asset that they have in their liaisons and in their city staff. Officer Edmiston is at every meeting and does a great job connecting us with the police. And Compliance Services is at every other meeting to help us with issues that are very important with regard to properties, upkeep, and et cetera. I want to salute arborist Jan Stazowski, who has been helping us the last two years at Grant School. We've been planting trees like crazy. And again, the city, crews don't come out to plant trees, neighbors plant trees, but the city staff and Jan, the arborist, are great partners in helping us identify what kinds of trees, how to space them, how to plant them. So we get the volunteers and the tools. The city staff comes out and guides us, and we're getting ready for our third round of tree plantings at Grant School as part of Arbor Day in the spring. We want to salute the city's street staff and sidewalk staff. For a couple of years, we had some problems over on Summer Street with traffic near the Boys and Girls Club, and we came up with a plan to put in a bulbout and a crosswalk. And the city staff, you know, just shepherded that with us very successfully. And now, for almost a year, we've had a very safe crossing at Summer Street in a very critical area. Again, something that was forwarded and thought of by some neighbors that lived right there and had concerns. Those concerns were translated into possible ideas. Those possible ideas became the reality of the crosswalk and the bulbout. So the city stuff works. Neighborhood associations work. Neighbors helping each other works. Neighbors working with city staff works. So that's the message I want to bring tonight. I also want to salute North Salem High School soccer team for winning the championship of the Central Valley League. And we also have the final two days of our food drive at Parish Middle School. We're trying to break our own state record of 60,000 pounds. So any food items brought to the school or cash. And then later tonight, you're going to hear from our vice chair, Jan Kailuvite, who's going to be unpacking our case during the public hearing on 8C regarding the Kunsy Apartments. And there's 10 or 12 of us here tonight who stand with Jan when we get to that matter later on to say, we have an issue that needs to be addressed, and we support the city's position on what the solution should be. So thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your very detailed and very interesting report. Are there questions from council?
Every once in a while, someone will say, "Sam, why do you go up and talk about Grant Neighborhood so much?" And I say, "Why aren't you talking about your neighborhood?" Everybody in Salem should be talking about their neighborhood all the time. And this is a vehicle to do so, so thank you for this opportunity. Neighborhood associations have this chance at the beginning of meetings, which we greatly appreciate, but I fear we underuse. So the other 18 neighborhood associations out there, come on down and tell us the good stuff that's going on in your neighborhood, so.
Thank you, Sam. I know you wear vests, and we've talked about the wardrobe of vests. You must have a wardrobe of hats in your closet, because you seem to have your head on a whole lot of projects, and we're glad you do.
Forgot the other hat. Ditto to everything Andy reported on. The Interfaith Hospitality Network is doing great work. The city of Salem has been a great partner since the inception in 1999. And Andy just gave you a brief snapshot of the good that's being done. People of faith, people of goodwill, working together, so.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you so much. I'm almost breathless and tired after he goes through all the things he does. Thank you, Sam. You're a huge help in our community. All right, Tam Brown? Am I saying your first name correctly? Tom? Oh, all right, sorry. Tom Brown and Larry George.
After listening to Sam, I almost forgot why I'm here.
Good evening. If you'll give your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Tom Brown. I live at 434 Creekside Drive Southeast. And Councilman Claussen already gets a star from me because he's my new councilman. I moved there six months ago. You know, I'm kind of an old sage. I've been a business in Salem since 1965, and I've owned property since 1969. And I got the letter about six weeks ago. I happen to have an underground sprinkling system. And I read this letter, and it says that, well, it's almost like an in-house housekeeping that we're going to move the monitoring of underground sprinkling systems from where it is now into wherever it's going to go. And in doing that, we're going to charge you $15 a year. Now, every homeowner in Salem that has an underground sprinkling system pays anywhere from $25 to $40 every year to have our sprinkler systems inspected, to make sure they function properly. And I can't understand why it costs $15 per household to monitor those reports. And I appreciate Councilman Claussen bringing that issue up, and hadn't even thought about that we're not even in the cycle. It should be in 2013, and I support having that action delayed till 2013 where it should be. Thank you.
Are there questions? All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. George. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Larry George. I live at 1285 Centennial Corp., Southeast, Salem, Oregon. And I'm here to speak to you tonight on the same issue he was talking about, and that is the backflow, and I call it a sprinkler tax, actually, because that seems like really that's what it is. But first, I, you know, I support the 2000 doing away with this, or not implementing it in 2012, but delaying it at least till 2013. And I guess what I don't understand is why the council, at a time like this, and why somebody would propose increasing a fee that you're already getting paid for. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, you know, and I guess I'm going to add something a little unusual. I'm going to ask that whoever it was that did this, I'd like them to stand up and explain to me how they can basically charge us for something that's already being paid for in our fee schedule. I mean, somebody had to do it. Was it one of the council members? Was it one of the staff members? But it just doesn't make any sense. And so I would hope that the council would see that, and when they get a chance to rule on it, would just, you know, is this what, that's why the public, the public a lot of times distrust government, just because they see things like this, and they say, "Why in the world do they do this?" And so that's all I'm telling you, is that I've written a couple of letters on it, but I'm pretty passionate about it, because I don't like being double taxed. Anybody have any questions?
Are there questions for Mr. George? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down. Bob Hidley and Bert Bogart?
Hi, I'm Bob Hidley. I live at 5835 Lone Oak Road Southeast. And I'm here to, I'm here in favor of postponing the backflow fee also. And what I wanted to say was, I sent an email to, it was answered by Jason Pully. He tells me that there's about 2,500 notices that are put in the mail every month to have people have their backflow devices checked, or to remind them if they didn't do it the first month, that kind of thing. So all this is a lot of work for city employees to send out all these letters. And I can understand why maybe you want more money for it. What I would like to ask is, why can't we just automate this? Instead of sending out 2,500 letters a month and all the manpower involved with that, just simply put a statement on your water bill that says it's time for your backflow check, and save a lot of money, and then you probably wouldn't need this extra fee because it'd be automated. So that's it.
Are there questions? All right. Yes, welcome.
I'm Bert Bogart, 5862 Fountainhead Street, Southeast Salem. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Based on the numbers that the previous speaker has gotten, has received from the city, this $15 fee would generate an additional $230,000 per year, if my math and his math are correct. And it seems like something, as Bob just said, that could be very easily done by simply merging the database of the Salem City Water Customers and those who have backflow prevention devices. And that doesn't seem like a $230,000 a year item to me. So I hope this will be reviewed carefully, certainly delayed, and if possible, automated. And if we have to pay a fee for a computer programmer, do that once, we'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Bogart? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down this evening to speak to us. All right. We are at the point in our agenda for consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor, was it Claussen? Oh, Counselor Nanki, thank you. To accept the consent calendar, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion, those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I think that's the quickest consent calendar we've had in weeks.
There's still something on it.
All right. We have two action items this evening, 4.3A. We have three items on the agenda under information reports. Do council members have any questions about any of those? All right, hearing none. We'll move on from there.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could, just I want to compliment staff as well as board members from the Social Services Advisory Board. Really easy to read, understandable, and I got to tell you, the work you folks are doing, particularly in food, shelter, medical assistance, it's great. I really appreciate the report, and so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Nice, thank you. All right. We're going to move on now for public hearings. Our first public hearing is item 8A, Proposed Assessment for Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District, which is Wards 1 and 2. I believe there's a staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Ryan Zink will be presenting the staff report.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Zink. I think this is the first time that you've appeared before us since I've been mayor. We're pleased to have you here.
It is, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe our city recorder is going to announce the hearing, and then we will begin with your report.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to consider the new assessment to pay the cost for economic improvement projects to be undertaken in the Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District.
Yes, oh, thank you. Just proceed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Ryan Zink. I am the management analyst for the Administrative Services Department. Tonight's public hearing was set to give owners of property within the Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District, also known as the EID, a chance to testify in support for or in opposition to the proposed assessments on the property within the EID. After the testimony is given tonight, council has three options. They can adopt the assessment, they can modify it, or council can decide not to approve the assessment. If, however, we receive written objections from property owners that represent more than 33% of the assessment, the assessment fails, and the council would have no authority to approve the assessment. If you'll permit me, I will briefly explain some of the events and procedures leading up to tonight's public hearing. On November 10th, 2010, council extended the EID period to June 30th, 2014, which allowed for an assessment to be proposed on properties within the EID. The code allows for the assessment period to be made for all or a portion of a full fiscal year, provided that the assessment be prorated for that same period. In September of this year, council adopted a resolution establishing the current, excuse me, establishing the period for the current fiscal year to be December 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2012. The prorated assessment rate for this period is just over four cents per square foot of real property with structure improvements, and just over one cent per square foot for unimproved property and parking lots. This assessment rate would yield approximately $131,000 for the current fiscal year. Activities authorized to be funded within the EID include things such as planning improvements, business recruitment and development, marketing, decorations and flowers, cleaning public spaces, providing security, and other activities that specifically benefit the EID. Salem Revised Code identifies the procedures to be followed in assessing the properties. Those steps include mailing notices of the proposed assessment to all the commercial property owners within the EID, informing the property owners of the time and place of a public hearing at which they can testify before council, that the public hearing be held no sooner than 30 days from the mailing of the notice, and that city council adopts a resolution enacting the assessment. In following those steps, staff mailed notices of the proposed assessment and public hearings to the owner of one, to the owners of 181 properties within the EID on October 13th, 2011. Staff has prepared resolution number 2011-76 for council's approval. If this resolution is adopted, the assessment will be levied as listed in Exhibit A of the resolution. And this exhibit lists the properties, the property owners, and the proposed assessment for each property. As of 5:00 PM today, staff has received objections from property owners of 23 properties representing 12.47% of the proposed assessment. As a recap, tonight's public hearing gives owners of property within the EID a chance to testify in support for or opposition to the proposed assessment. And after the testimony is given, council has three options. They can adopt the assessment, they can modify it, or council can decide not to approve the assessment. I want to be clear that only written objections can be counted as we are determining whether or not the assessment can be approved, can be adopted. And those objections include the location of, must include four items. The location of the property, the owner of the property, a statement of objection to the proposed assessment, and it must be signed by the property owner or an authorized representative of the owner. This slide will be up during the public hearing as a reminder of that. Pen and paper is provided on the back in case anyone would like to provide additional written testimony this evening. And at the close of the public hearing, I will present the final tally of objections received from property owners, and staff will be available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Zink? Are there any, is there anyone signed up to speak? It looks like we have no one on the list. Counselor Clem?
Yes, not knowing if anybody's going to address this, Madam Mayor, from the public, I do have questions about that percentage, so whenever it's appropriate.
Okay, all right. Well, I didn't have anyone signed up on the list. Is there anyone here who had meant to sign up on the list, or perhaps signed up on the wrong list? We have several tonight. All right, questions of Mr. Zink? Mr. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Run the percentage by me again. Is that the remonstrance against the EID? So does that imply that there's an 87.26 approval and a 12.74% against?
Yes, that is, that's what that would mean.
Okay. And the remonstrance process is done, then?
As of the close of the public hearing this evening, yes, the remonstrance.
Okay. So do we have a percentage of response? Everybody has to respond? Or just 12% of everything you've received is in opposition?
We, staff received 23 responses. All 23 of those responses were in opposition to the assessment. Those 23 responses represent about 12 and 1/2% of the proposed assessment.
Of the total, oh, the dollar value?
Of the dollar value, of the total proposed assessment, yes.
Got it, okay. So property owners representing that percentage of the total dollar value voiced their opposition in writing?
Yes.
In the format that we prescribe?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions? Counselor Clausen?
I have a quick one. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So property owners, if they hit 30 percent remonstrance, it's gone, no matter what we want to say or do, right, on council? Is that correct?
Yes, we must receive written objections equalling more than 33 percent of the value of the assessment from property owners.
Of the assessment value, okay.
Yes.
And then, as you said, we've got the options to, the three options you went through, which is approve it, deny it, or modify.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. No further questions. I will ask Counselor Bennett to make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to close the hearing first. All right, the hearing is now closed. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the city council adopt resolution number 2012, day, 2011-76.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to adopt the ordinance, the resolution. Counselor Bennett, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, Madam Mayor. This will be the second time we'll have adopted an EID for downtown. I think all of us understand how important this has been in terms of the economic, and we hope for increased economic vitality of the downtown area. 12.7 percent, I believe, is less remonstrance than we had the first time out two or three years ago for the downtown EID. I think this is just a real positive statement that downtown businesses are voluntarily assessing themselves to have the kind of programs made available to them through the EID. It's important to property owners, it's important to downtown businesses, and I hope it's real important to the city council tonight. So I'd ask you to vote yes on this motion.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to adopt the resolution. Is there further discussion? All right, we'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. We have another public hearing tonight. We'll give people a moment to kind of regroup here. We have a little bit of change of the guard with our staff. We'll give them a chance to regroup. All right, are we about reassembled here? Whoops, we've lost a couple, oh, we lost Dan, all right. Our second public hearing has to do with the city council policy C1 amendment. Would the recorder please announce the public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to consider amending city council policy C1 related to allocation of transient occupancy tax revenue adopted March 28th, 2011 to provide for competitive process for facility operating grants in the major tourist attraction and cultural facilities division of the Cultural and Tourism Fund.
Thank you. And our staff report will be given by none other than our city manager, Linda Norris.
Thank you, Mayor, and I believe Kelly Jacobs is also on the phone. Are you there, Kelly? Okay. She wasn't able to, which is fine, she's on vacation. The subject of this public hearing is amending policy C1 with resolution number 2011-74. Specifically, the public hearing is on the proposal to have a competitive process for awarding funds for facility operating grants in the major tourist attraction and cultural facilities division of the fund. In the past years, each of the operating facilities received a similar, the same amount of operating grant, if they were eligible. This change would result in attractions or facilities receiving grants that are based on the scores that they receive on the rating rubric, which council has seen before, and those scores will be based on meeting the criteria that is important for, the top board has recommended as being important for these operations. I wanted to let council know and let the public know that the public hearing is only related to revisions to the resolution and not related to any other matters. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed to people who have signed up to speak this evening. Scott Snyder and Sandra Barnett.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Welcome.
My name is Scott Snyder. I work at 201 Liberty Street Southeast. I'm also the chairperson for the Cultural Promotion Tourism Advisory Board. I'd like to recognize a couple of our board members here. We've got Virginia Green, my vice chair, and Lola Hackett, a board member. The Cultural Promotion Tourism Advisory Board is seeking your endorsement for the proposed changes to policy C1 for creating a competitive process for evaluating and funding the operating grants. We're cognizant of the budget issues facing you and realize that less TOT dollars will be allocated to the budget, the grant division of the fund in the next budget cycle. We developed the proposal to make sure that we're forwarding recommendations to council based on merit, eliminating the impression of entitlement. We value room night production as well as enhancing the quality of life in Salem. I want to verify that change being, the change being considered has no impact on the current funding process in place for event grants for both large or small events, and they will maintain, continue to maintain a 30 percent mix of the dollars that we advise on. We're very proud of the collaborative effort that we had with our stakeholders in the multiple subcommittee and special committee meetings that we held, as well as the outstanding city support staff. We want to thank you for your time, and I'd welcome any questions regarding more specificity on the process that we took, if there are any.
Are there questions for Mr. Snyder?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and again, thank you so much for the work that you do leading our top board. I know it takes considerable time. We appreciate the attention you give to it.
It's a pleasure, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor and city councils. Good evening. Sandra Barnett of the Salem Art Association, 600 Mission Street Southeast. On behalf of the Salem Art Association, I would just like to support this amendment. I think good use of the TOT funds are particularly crucial at this time. And at the same time, I'd just like to address the importance of the cultural and heritage facilities here in Salem and what they do for the city, both in terms of tourism, but also as an economic driver. Professor Funda Stup of Michigan University said that the economic impacts of cultural tourism, said of the economic impacts of cultural tourism. Recent literature is full of reports indicating that cultural tourism is growing, that cultural tourists spend more, stay longer, and tend to stay at hotels rather than at campgrounds or with friends and family, as do what she calls general tourists. Consequently, these tourists would be deemed most desirable in terms of economic contribution to a state or region, end quote. I just, I think we need, the TOT is doing a great job. I think we need to support them. The cultural heritage facilities depend on the good strategic use of these funds, and it is particularly difficult times, and I think we have to be very mindful of how we use what little resources we have. Cultural, cultural tourism is the cash cow of tourism these days. It's a growing phenomenon, and we should really get on it and utilize our funds to the best effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Barnett? Thank you for coming down, and thank you for all the work that you're doing with Salem Art Association and with the Bush Barn and the Bush House. Thank you. Carl Knudsen and Peter Booth.
Hi, I'm Carl Knudsen. I live in Ward 7. I am the executive director of the Willamette Arts Center. It's located in Ward 1. I would like to start off by thanking the Cultural Tourism and Promotions Board, as well as Kelly Jacobs, for a tremendous amount of work that they've done. Having sat through most of their deliberations, I truly appreciate the diligence and the thoughtfulness that they put forth in developing this proposal. I wrote a little speech tonight, basically, to give you, and I'm abbreviating that pretty dramatically to sort of stay on topic, but I do want to address, basically, the investment that the city makes in our cultural partners here in Salem, and the importance that each of us brings to the recipe that makes Salem, basically, a desirable location, not just for day travelers, but also for overnight travelers. That's really a benefit through all programs of the city in bringing that in. As an investment, I think it's very important that the city council and other members receive information about their investment and getting that. So I really hope that, in addition to the reports that we give to the CPAP board regarding the many great programs and events that we put on, that you receive timely information and a small status update from them, basically describing in a brief what we do. I realize it would be impossible to read all of the things that we write about, all the great things we do. There just really isn't time for you all to do that. But I think that is really important, that to be able to make an informed decision about what your investment is bringing to the city, that you have some relevant data going forth for that. In addition to that, I would really hope that the city council and the mayor choose to reenact the opportunity for the cultural tourism partners to basically give a short presentation to the city council describing what it is exactly that they do and what they bring to the city, the successes that they're having, and things like that. I think it's, it is a great educational opportunity for the council to really manage and understand what benefits that their investment in the cultural institutions and historical institutions in Salem are doing. So I want to again thank the top board for all of their hard work, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions of council? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming down this evening. And Peter Booth.
Howdy.
Welcome.
Peter Booth, Willamette Heritage Center at the Mill, 1313 Mill Street, also resident 280 Culver South. And I'm going to be repeating much and echoing what's come before me, coming to voice the Willamette Heritage Center and my own support of the change in C1 policy, and also to, also duplicate in our support, my support, for all the work that the TOT board has done and Kelly Jacobs has done in supporting us, being our partners, and helping us in making Salem a better place to live and a Salem a better place or a more attractive place for visitors to come to. TOT has been a successful program. The amount of tourism, direct dollars spent in the community has grown tremendously. It's doubled since 1991. It continues to grow. The very, and not only in closing that particular economic sector, it has increased our quality of life, contributing to such things as the Elsinore Theater, starting new groups like the Willamette Arts Center, helping various, helping us in saving our historic structures like Deepwood and Bush, and the list goes on about the many things that the TOT has assisted in creating both a better place to live, as well as a stronger economic sector within our community. By changing C1 policy, you are helping to reward this merit. It's the next evolution in the TOT granting policy. It'll be making that particular aspect of the granting system more responsive to the community needs. It'll make it more like a normal granting process in a sense that it will be rewarding for merit. And in the end, it will help build a stronger cultural community that will achieve the goals that we all wanted to see TOT do.
Are there questions for Mr. Booth? Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter, thanks for your testimony coming down tonight. I'm, I want to make sure I understand that the, from your viewpoint, we're going to go from funding 10 or 11 entities a year?
10. 10. It used to be 11 until we merged.
Oh, that's what it is, okay. So from 10 down to 8, potentially 7 or 8. Is your perspective that all 10 will still receive funds if they score high enough? Or that some won't get any money at all in this new C1 policy?
I'd like to just interrupt for a moment and ask our city manager to answer a question with regard to sort of the scope of what we're doing here this evening versus what will be done when the chart is actually implemented, used.
Well, the process would be that based on the ratings, when the entities that score high enough would receive funding. That could be all of them, or it could be fewer of them.
Okay. So you're understanding it could be few, fewer entities receiving money based on how they score? Is that your understanding?
Or, yes, or all 10 of us could still receive the money. As my understanding of the scoring is if all the entities make a minimum score, they're still eligible, they'll just receive a percentage less. So it could still be all 10.
I just want to make sure we all know that there's the possibility that things are really going to change. It sounds like everybody's welcoming, or at least the testimony we've heard so far. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Booth? I'm sorry, Diana Dickey? Counselor Dickey, you okay? All right. All right, thank you very much, Peter, for coming down and for all the work you do. Willamette Heritage Center is a real jewel in our crown. We appreciate all the work you do there and the work that your volunteers are doing as well. All right, is there any further testimony? Seeing no one else signed up, no one else waving their arms at me, I will close the public hearing. Counselor Bennett, I will entertain a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the city council approve the recommendation from the Cultural and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board and adopt resolution number 2011-74, amending council policy C1.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Counselor Bennett, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, again, I think the manager was very clear, but let me underline it. This merely has to do with how we're scoring on these facility operating grants only. I received, I think, like most counselors, a batch of email that I think was just, sort of just fundamentally misinformed on what was going on here this evening, and a real misunderstanding, I'm sure an honest misunderstanding. There's no budget cutting, there's no changing and moving money from one part of the budget to another. None of that is going on tonight. We're merely adopting a process that is recommended to us by the board that really is closest to cultural and tourist related issues. So I really encourage you to support this and pretty much ignore, I think, what were really some misinformed, honestly misinformed, but honestly concerned emails we all received.
All right, Counselor Clausen?
Well, I definitely appreciate the work that the Culture and, Cultural and Tourism Advisory Board does. We might come up with an easier name for them sometime in the future, but... Anyway, I think this is a step in the right direction. You know, when we're looking at providing public funds for private entities, whether they be historic or, you know, beneficial for our community, I think it's good that we do a real good, honest assessment of these organizations so we're not just kind of handing money out and hoping that something's happening. This gives us some, a scoring mechanism for that. And I think, I'm real curious to see what happens this year. I think that it's a good thing, and maybe after this year, we might take a look at it again if we need to, and if not, this is just a real good step in the right direction, so I'm all for it.
Great, thank you. Counselor Dickey?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I, I'm going to support this motion. I, long before I even sat in the seat, I was being lobbied about, can we do something about this process? So, and those of you who lobbied me know who you are, and you're probably either watching or you're in the audience right now. But I think that, you know, we directed staff to take care of this and the, and the top board to take care of this a few months ago, and I really appreciate all their hard work, because I know that they were under a pretty swift deadline to get this done so we could get the grants out. the grants out this year. I have some reservations about weighing that heads and beds with just how something enhances the livability in our community. However, having said that, I think this is a great step in the right direction, as Counselor Claussen said. We might be able to tweak this after we go through the first year. But we are doing something, and that's, I've heard that ever since I've been here, is we need to do something about this process, and we're finally doing it, and I'm really happy to be able to support it.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Thomas.
I just had a question. I'm also in support of this, but I had a question. Once this rolls over, is it going to be possible that all of the organizations that this pertains to, that they will get some type of training upfront to kind of help them to understand what the criteria is going to be, so that they're all on the same playing field?
Yes. We do provide every year some information to potential applicants, and I believe the scoring rubric has been widely shared with all of the facilities, so I think everyone is aware of that information.
All right. Further comments or questions? Counselor Clem.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked my questions about the ability for people to still get the same amount of money, because I appreciate that this, the board's done a good job of moving this to a competitive process. I'm wondering what it looks like a year or two from now, when folks who lost are standing in front of the microphone. So I think, I think we all need to take a deep breath and understand that there are going to be some folks who are, some quality of life, cultural facilities that may not receive what they've received in the past, as well as tourism generating. So I hope we're all prepared for this change, because a year from now, we just need to remember that we all thought this was a good idea.
On that note, thank you, Counselor Clem. All right. It's time to vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Claussen has his hand up. Yes.
If I could ask one question, and maybe this might be extension of my comments, was I think my one reservation I have is the issue of, I'm not seeing much in here in terms of, if I come in and I've got an entity and I want $5,000 for a grant, and I put in a dynamite presentation, and I get granted $30,000, what's that do to the rest of the pool? Can I get the $30,000 even though I only want 5? I've got a real small thing going on. That's the one question mark I have in this, and I don't know if it can be answered, or if it's something we've got to work through.
My understanding...
And I asked this in the work session, and I didn't understand.
My understanding, from when you asked the question before and following up with Kelly Jacobs afterwards, and I can ask Mr. Snyder if I get this wrong, if you would come to the podium, but my understanding is if an entity only asks for $5,000 or $10,000 and score well, that they wouldn't be receiving in excess of that amount. Is that correct, Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, by the way. This is the one thing that nags at me.
No problem.
Scott Snyder, again, President of the Culture Promotion Tourism Advisory Board. I think that what you're referencing would be more in the grant, event grant process. The competitive aspect for the operating grants are for organizations that have a much larger budget and need than putting on one parade or one type of a bizarre-type project. So when they apply for, if they apply for, let's say, I'm going to use the art fair, if they apply for a $5,000 grant and their scoring qualifies them to participate, then they would receive what they requested. If it was a $2,500 grant for a small event, and they qualified based on the grading process, then they would receive the $2,500, leaving more money in that special event category for more events. We really want to promote as many events as we possibly can, but the operating portion is for those groups and facilities that meet the criteria for an operating grant. It's not an easy thing to achieve. It's something that takes years to get to that level to achieve, and so they do have a much higher operating budget than a $5,000 amount.
Okay. May I follow up? So am I not seeing everything in here where there's a separate part of the application that says how much you're asking for? Because that's the thing I don't see in the scoring rubric, is how much are you looking for?
Right. Well, in the past years, as was referenced earlier, it was an equal portion of the dollar amount, and it was based on, you know, two years ago, there were 11 applicants. Last year, we put a moratorium, so we would not be able to accept any new applicants. So we don't know. This year, there may be two or three more people than the 10 that qualified last year that apply. So this grading process is really an effort to make sure that the organizations that actually receive operating grants have money that is going to be meaningful to their operation. So last year, and I apologize if I'm using an incorrect figure, but I believe it was $20,000 or $22,000 was for each of the 10 organizations that qualified. So it was a little over $5,500 per quarter that they received as for operations-related items.
And if I could just add, it was $26,400 this year for the organizations that received operating grants. Then there are two other categories. One is special events, and a certain percentage of the funds that the board allocates go to special events, and those are just based on what the requests are and how much money there is, and how those are allocated. And then the third category is capital improvement and outlay grants, and they're for things like furnace replacements or office space build-out. That's in a category that gets a smaller percentage of the money.
I think I understand the breakout of the categories. It's just, if I have a $50,000 operating budget for my organization, and I already have a $40,000 grant from one source, and I need to fill the extra $10,000, and I come here, and I've fulfilled the stringent requirements to qualify for the operating grant, do we have a way to cover that in the scoring?
And that was something that could not be addressed under the former system, because we get their, not 1099s, but we get their, what is the tax forms that we get? 99, as part of their application process. So we didn't have the discretion to say this organization doesn't need as much as another. They were all equal, because they qualified. Now, going forward, we would be able to incorporate that as part of the information to digest.
And is that included in the scoring, though? That's the thing I don't see.
Well, it's part of their grant application, so it's part of the, it may not be a part of, you know, the quality of life or the generation of room nights, but it is part of their opportunity in their dialogue, their opening narrative in their grant application.
Okay. I think I'm kicking a dead horse. That's my one thing that I'm seeing, might be a potential issue, might not ever be an issue, but I guess we'll just kind of see what happens in the first year.
Yes, we can watch for that this year, and if we need more direction about that, we can come back.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there further questions? I would just like to say thank you so much for the, to the Cultural and Tourism Advisory Board, for the work that you've done. I know you've labored long and hard on coming up with the new system for evaluating the grants and for dispersing the funds, and I truly appreciate that hard work, because I know that when those decisions are made, they're very tough decisions, and yet every one of those dollars, I know, can really make Salem shine. So thank you for your hard work in that regard. All right. We are, no further people signed up. I will close the public hearing, and we will vote. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion?
Motion's on the floor, Madam Mayor. We're ready to vote.
Oh. Well, how efficient was that? All right. It's been moved and seconded that we would accept the recommendation of the Cultural and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board to adopt the council policy C-1 amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We have a third public hearing. I'll give people a chance to sort of regroup and depart as they might like to.
Yes, we do.
The staff association, yes, the staff association is five.
Neighbor Association is five, yeah.
Staff of the party, Neighbor Association.
I believe we're ready to proceed for the third public hearing of the evening. Would the city recorder please announce the public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to consider the staff recommendation to revoke the multifamily housing license for the Kunsy Apartments located at 1360 through 1390 Liberty Street Northeast.
Thank you. And is there a staff report?
The staff report was already given in your packet, I believe.
Okay.
Are you going to do any presentation?
Yes, I'm going to do a presentation.
Oh, all right. Fine. Thank you. All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, and citizens. My name is Suzanne Nelson, and I am the Multifamily Inspector for the Compliance Services Division. I have been a code compliance officer for over 10 years. The last five of those, I've been inspecting apartments for compliance with the Salem Housing Code. Tonight, I would like to present a property that has been in violation of not only the Housing Code, but several other codes for several years, and to recommend that the multifamily license for this property be revoked. This property is known as the Kunsy Apartments, and is located at 1360 through 1390 Liberty Street, northeast between Gaines and Hood Streets in the Grant neighborhood. The property consists of two lots, 1360, with two apartment houses, each originally containing four dwelling units, and 1390, a single-family dwelling. The house was built in 1937, the apartments in 1953. Mr. Larry Wright, the current owner of record, was issued his multifamily license in 1982, and still remains the licensee of this property. The single-family residence at 1390 was added to the license in 1988 because it is contiguously owned. Throughout this presentation, both addresses will be referred to as property. The last time this property received a certificate of inspection was in 1998. The certificates are normally issued every five years. Between 2003 and 2011, Compliance Services received approximately 14 formal complaints regarding this property. One case remained open from 2003 to 2008, which consisted of many different violations at both the apartments and the house. Current conditions at the property are shown in the following photos. Many upgrades and repairs have been made, but it has been the history of the property owner to make these repairs without permits, obtaining them only after he's been penalized. Projects are rarely completed, and some of the renovations have caused more harm to the property than what existed previously. Unit 2, shown here, has no legal egress at this time. Thankfully, it was recently vacated. The exterior of the property still remains unprotected where changes or repairs have been made, and trim is missing or in ill repair. Access to the basement from either stairwell is still unfinished and dangerous, yet tenants have reported they still entered this area, a laundry room, after the property owner was advised it would be off limits until the stairs were completed. Graffiti is present, egress stairrails are loose and unsafe, and windows are improperly boarded where missing or broken. Siding is still missing around the window changes. Windows have not been replaced since March 2011, and improper boarding will allow weather to damage the window casings. Dry rot throughout the property has not been repaired. Unfinished and damaged eaves are allowing rodents into the property. This trim, which has been missing for years, has allowed weather to enter and rot the structure. This poorly maintained access ramp is rotten and has holes and trip hazards throughout. There are broken windows all over the property. During reconstruction of the exterior basement stairwells, the dangerous area has been improperly fenced, allowing access to tenants and children. Recurring violations since 2003 consisted of keeping of junk, for which the owner has received four infraction citations between 2006 and 2011. These photos provide additional documentation of the magnitude of junk violations found during this time period. An example of the blatant disregard for the condition of the property can be observed in these photos taken over time after the property owner was advised to remove this toilet from his property. It still managed to reappear years after it was first addressed. Failure to maintain the exterior of the structure, to keep exterior walls free from deterioration, to maintain weather-tight windows and doors, to maintain roofs and drainage, downspouts and gutters, to repair broken windows, and for maintaining zero-leak structure, the owner was issued 13 citations between 2006 and 2011. In attempt to gain compliance with the multiple and recurring violations at these units, Compliance Services used a variety of tactics. Nine correction notices were sent, 22 infraction citations were issued, and four years of property maintenance enforcement fees were levied. Mr. Wright has been found guilty on all counts, paying approximately $2,800 in citations alone. He is currently in collections for $1,204 owed to the municipal court, and for $3,675 in unpaid property maintenance enforcement fees. In 2007, a tenant complaint regarding the condition of his apartment allowed compliance entry. These violations were observed. There was no working smoke detector in the unit. Outlets were damaged and improperly maintained, and incomplete plumbing repairs were found in both the kitchen and the bath. This was the last time compliance has been able to enter all the units, so there is no way to know the current interior conditions. Several inspections have been scheduled, but the owner has failed to notify the tenants or show to the appointments. Salem Police Department had nine responses to this property last year. Two of them were very serious offenses. SWAT was deployed to one call where a teen girl was picked up nearby and sexually assaulted by a number of individuals who refused to enter the apartment complex. The failing stairwell under the entry to Apartment 2 has severely damaged the landing to this unit. This is the only exit. The following photos show the progress that was made to give this unit safe exiting. In May 2011, a citation was issued for this landing because the tenants were moved in expecting to use this dangerous entrance. The owner has been making repairs over the last several years, but they have been made without permit, causing building and safety to issue stop work orders and permits to be obtained after the fact. Most repairs have been ongoing for four years or more, and few have actually been completed. This stairwell leading to the basement, which was failing, and the owner was directed to repair it with a permit in 2007, and here is this, again, taken in mid-October of this year, four years later, after citations were issued and the owner found guilty. It shows a little progress. The rear stairwell, which required a building permit and a plumbing permit for the drain at the bottom of the staircase, has not yet been completed, nor has the plumbing permit been obtained. One last check of the property today found that the basement stairway has been poured, but unfortunately, this pipe, presumably a sewer cleanout, has been illegally installed in a step and without a plumbing permit. This new fence, the wood fence, was added to the top of an engineered retaining wall. It adds surcharge to the wall beyond the soil expected. Therefore, newly engineered plans need to be provided to building and safety, or the fence needs to be removed. fence needs to be removed. Siding and window replacement has been ongoing for several years. These repairs, or these repairs require a permit, which was not obtained until a stop work order was issued by Building and Safety in 2009. To date, proper flashing and trim has still not been installed. Here, when the siding was changed, plumbing vents disappeared. Siding on the front building has not been completed on the second floor. Proper flashing has not been installed, and siding and trim is still missing in several areas, leaving the building open to decay. Again, the plumbing vents are gone, which commonly causes slow drains and sewage backups. Attic ventilation has been changed, but it is unclear since permits were not obtained if the new venting is adequate. Not only has this property been poorly maintained, but considerable debt related to this property is still owed to the City of Salem. To date, rescheduling fees for missed appointments, property maintenance fees, and unpaid infraction citations total almost $5,500. If council should decide that revocation of this license is appropriate, the property owner is required to serve tenants of this property notice. Once 30 days has passed, the landlord has not vacated the units, infraction citations will be issued for each occupied unit for each day they remain inhabited. Any tenants having difficulty in finding housing will be assisted by our division by working with multifamily managers currently in the program. We will assist in locating safe units comparable in rent to where they currently reside. Salem Housing Authority has also offered to provide information of programs available to any of the displaced tenants. Despite the owner working diligently for the past few weeks since the notice of this hearing was served, the owner's history shows that the business will not be conducted in continuing compliance with all applicable laws and ordinances in a manner comporting with public health, safety, and general welfare. Pursuant to SRC 59, every owner remains personally liable for maintaining any residential occupancy in full compliance with the provisions of this chapter. This includes paying required fees, participating in inspections, and most importantly, providing safe housing to the tenants that reside there. Based on years of the City of Salem attempting to merely keep this property safe and in compliance with the most minimum standards of the Salem Housing Code, the blight it brings to an upcoming neighborhood on a gateway thoroughfare still remains. Therefore, it is the recommendation of staff that Mr. Wright's multifamily housing license be revoked until such time as this property is in compliance with all city codes. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that very thorough report and the attention you've paid to this property for far too long, but thank you for the work that you've done. We have some people signed up. First is Larry Wright, owner of the property. Mr. Wright, you have 15 minutes for your presentation, and the warning lights, the amber light will come on two minutes from the end, and when the red light comes on, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do I have a handout?
Counselor Cannon, we're distributing a document that the owner of the property has just delivered to council, and I would imagine we would be able to send this to you through probably fax or scanning, but not right now.
Thank you.
Probably in the morning, okay. All right, you may proceed.
Madam Mayor, council, my name is Larry Wright. My office is 211 Front Street, Salem. This property was one that went through different owners, different partnerships, which I was involved with, and I finally ended up with it. It has been a project. The last couple of years, and this is my hand, this is what I'm handing out, all the windows were replaced. We replaced 21 windows in the back building. That was with the vinyl thermopane low E. We replaced the 15 windows in the front building. The cost of that was about $10,800. The siding, the siding on the back building, we had to tear off all the existing siding, put on new sheathing, wrap it with the wrap that's required, and install hardy plank. The back building consists of about 2,160 square feet. The cost of the work of tear-off, install is about $5 a square foot. That would be $10,800. The front building, we tore off all of the old siding that was going to be replaced, which is the bottom half of the building. Installed new sheathing, wrapped and installed new hardy plank at a cost of $7,000. So the siding of, over the last couple of years, has cost $17,800. The painting of the two buildings for the replaced hardy plank, $1,750. The stairs that were indicated leading to the basement, which was not to be used, but which tenants would go down at times, that had to be engineered. I had to pay an engineering firm $4,000 to do the engineering. The front stairs, which Susan showed as complete, and that pipe is not a cleanup pipe, it is a, an access to get to the existing drain in case it clogs, it's be cut off and a cap put on it. So the front stairs, the cost of the front stairs, we had to tear out and haul away the old concrete, dig the new hole. It was since it was next to the building, under trees and under a porch, it had to be done by hand. We had to buy the wall bricks, labor to install, and the contractor, three weeks ago, finished pouring those stairs at a cost of $6,510 for the front stairs. The back stairs, they were, they have, the tear-out has been done, the hole has been dug, the wall bricks have been installed, and the wall is there. Total cost so far on the back stairs, $3,280. Total spent in the last couple of years, $44,140. To finish the back stairs, the, there's an issue with the drain, getting an answer as far as how to get it permitted. The concrete contractor, $2,500 to form and pour the stairs. The handrails have been bid, front and back stairs, $1,500, and to replace the windows shot out by the police is approximately $3,600. So that's what's been going on to date. The, I had a person running the project for a while. He was, he was working with Susan. He went off the deep end. I've talked to Susan, I mean, he started lying to Susan, he started lying to me. The work not getting done and the permits not being pulled that were supposed to be. Basically, I've bought and rehabbed properties in Salem. I've moved three houses that were going to be tore down, rehabbed them, bought other properties and rehabbed them. This project has been not the easiest because it started four years ago when, well, about 2006, when I was involved in a divorce and a lot of economic events were taking place. In looking at what has been spent, the progress that has been made, we're basically four to six months from finishing this project, and basically all of those issues of those citations will have gone away. The, the units have always been inspected. They've always passed inspections. The last group of inspections, we only, you know, I had two or three renters, those were inspected and passed. As I fixed up the units, I had, I called Susan, she came and passed them. Tenants do not move in unless they've been inspected and passed. There are vacant units that have not been inspected because they're not completely upgraded yet. This person who was hired, allowed some people to move in without telling me. That's why when, when we were working on the front stairs in Unit Number 2, as you saw, the front stairs went away. Those tenants were actually asked to move out. They did move out so that there is no tenants trying to get in and out of that apartment. There are two tenants remaining that were in the legal process now of eviction. Units Number 4 and Unit Number 7, there's been, they've been involved in not only non-payment of rent, but some criminal activity. So those, those people who were unauthorized to move in by me are being moved out. So at this point, all I can say is we're four to six months from having everything done.
Are there questions for Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Dickey.
Yeah, thanks for coming down. I do have a question. So in the staff report, it indicates some of the citations were issued 2004, 2005, and on the hand that you gave us, it doesn't actually have a date, so I'm just wondering where, because it just says last couple of years. Were your repairs started just immediately after the initial citations, or when were these repairs started that are in the handout?
Some of the windows were started because some of the windows are broken, so 2000, probably in 2007, the windows, some of, some of the other minor things, in earnest, basically because of the cost involved, 2009, 2010, 2011 is when this, you know, $45,000 is, that does not include all the work done on the interior of the units in terms of livability issues. This was all just the exterior and the requirements, safety requirements pertaining thereto.
Are there other questions? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions on the, the units. Apparently, four or five of them are only occupied right now, and you're talking about two more that are gonna become vacant?
Yeah, at the moment, they're Unit Number 3, 4, 7, and 8, the four out of the, there's only really seven, the basement unit in the front has not been occupied for 10 years or more, 20 years. So there's only seven units at the, at present, there's four of them that are occupied, two of them are being evicted. The house next door, the lady's been there for 15 years. Unit Number 3, Mr. Matos has been there eight years. And in terms of, you know, whenever he calls, we come and fix whatever needs.
Okay, and then to follow up on, it sounded like you had a property manager, but not necessarily a property management firm?
He was not a property manager. He was, he was sort of in charge of running all the fix-up that was going on, on-site. He had construction background. He was ex-military, ex, you know, sort of special forces. Evidently, sort of in the middle of all this rehab, he, I don't know whether it's PTSD, but he got involved, dropped out, started using some drugs, and made a, you know, made a mess. A lot of the stuff he did had to take out and redo. And this is, you know, even, you know, he was shining on Susan. I know he was telling you a lot of things. And once we got stuff straightened out, then, you know, time and money, as fast as we could go, we did it.
For a permit, would he have not needed your signature to obtain that?
You know, a project manager could get it. I mean, we did get, actually, on two of the permits, we did not even know we needed permits to do the siding, because usually on a house, you don't need sightings to, permit to replace siding or windows, and when they came out and told us, then we went and got permits at that point, but it was double charged because we started to work without permits.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Clauston.
Thanks for coming down, Mr. Wright. I'm just wondering, you said four to six months to finish the fix-ups. Aside from the units, and I don't think this conversation is going inside the units, as we haven't been able to get in and make inspections, it doesn't sound like, but why couldn't this work be done in 30 days? I don't, from the scale and scope, what I'm seeing?
Well, I don't have $44,000. I don't have revenue shortfalls, I have overspending issues.
So this isn't funds that you've expended? These are funds that are yet to be expended?
These are funders that, I've expended the $44,000. It's gonna take another $7,000 or $8,000 just to finish the basics.
Okay.
So, and yes, I mean, you know, the, the units where people are living were inspected by the city and were passed.
Okay.
The whole units were not passed because some of them weren't ready, and Susan just said, you know, when they're ready, call me and I'll inspect them, but don't move anybody in until I inspect them, and I always did not move anybody in until she said I could on the units as they were being remodeled.
Okay.
Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wright, if, if council decided to give you another 30 days or 60 days to get the infractions all taken care of, could it be done in 60-day period? How long would you need to get this to where it even looks livable for people?
Well, I mean, if you, if you drive by it now, the siding, the windows, except for the ones that the police shot out, I mean, it's, I mean, it looks very presentable. What was interesting about the, the police raid, out of the 21 new windows that were on the second floor, they shot out over 12 of them. They not, so if there was a bedroom with three windows, they shot out all three windows, in many cases, both the top and the bottom panes.
How long ago was that?
That was May, April.
So seven, seven months ago?
Yeah.
Is there a reason that the windows haven't been replaced yet, regardless of who shot them out or why?
Money.
Money that you need to?
Money that, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, I had to spend the $4,000 on the engineering and then dig out the staircase. I mean, if you look at the, the actual expenditures, they're...
Are people living in those units, sir?
Only four, there are four, there are four people using, in those units.
With shot-out windows?
No, 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 no. No, that, that is boarded up and vacant.
Okay.
No.
So you're saying you could, given that the amount of funds that you would still need to make it, to take care of all the infractions, getting it done in a 60-day timeframe probably isn't likely then, is that?
I'm not gonna promise something. I mean, you know, I mean, I've already, you know, I've spent a lot more than the rents that I've collected on there.
Sure, we're just considering pulling your license, so I wanna, I wanna make sure I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, what I'm saying is, you know, and I'm presenting this to the council, is, I mean, if you can see the amount that has been spent, and that's not even including the interiors that money was spent on, to finish up just the, and get back to the, replace the windows and take care of all the stairs, and basically that take would, in essence, take care of all the infractions. I mean, all the construction debris has been hauled away, there's no, there's no garbage, there's no junk. So basically, what I'm saying is that within, you know, four to six months, everything would be interior, exterior inspections.
And Mr. Wright, what would you do with the property if the multifamily license were not, were pulled or not continued by council?
I'd have to, as I could, you know, keep working on it and fix it up till it passed inspection.
You just couldn't have people living there?
Yeah, that would just slow down the process because I'd have zero rents.
Sure, okay, thanks.
Are there further questions? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, one final question in regards to inspections.
Yeah.
The, the folks who are inhabiting right now, the units were inspected by the City of Salem before they moved in?
By Susan.
And what's that time period? How long have those individuals been in?
Those were within, well, those inspections were done within the last... Those were within, well, those inspections were done within the last, well, let's see, seven and eight were not done. So she looked at those after the other ones. But Mr. Matos's apartment and Number Two, which we moved them out because of the stairs, and Number Four were done earlier than that, within, you know, I think a year ago.
So all of those currently occupied would have been inspected within the last year?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make, Mr. Wright. I wanted you to know that when I became mayor in January, I did receive emails of complaint against your property, and emails of concern, and really asking for city assistance, even though we have been working along with you since about, what, 2003?
Oh, let me--
I was alarmed by those emails and troubled by them, and immediately, we began responding to them, as the city had been over the years. I know Counselor Bennett responded as well. The interesting thing about the pictures that I saw tonight was that, as I looked at those pictures in those absolutely deplorable conditions, front, back, top, bottom, inside and outside, the thing missing from those pictures were the people. And I think about the people who had to live in those apartments and who paid rent to you, and whose lives every day were marginalized because of the surroundings that they were forced to live in. I just want you to have that thought, to know how I'm going to vote on this issue this evening. People who are in dire straits, even in that situation, deserve safe, adequate, clean, proper housing, and that's not what you were providing.
Madam Mayor, the pictures that you saw of that one interior apartment, Number Seven, was when it was vacant before it was remodeled, after a tenant totally tore it apart. And that was totally remodeled and inspected and improved.
I think that we're ready to move on to, we have further testimony. I see that we have the Neighborhood Association representative, Sam Skilren, is here to speak.
Do you have a permission for Jan Kailowite to speak first, in her official position in the office of the--
Certainly, that would be fine. Jan, are you ready?
This one final comment--
Thank you. Yes?
I have improved a lot of properties in this town. This one is being improved. I've moved houses that were going to be tore down, completely rehabbed, and I've rehabbed other houses. It's not like, I don't, I don't buy properties without starting to work on them. This property was involved in different partnerships before I became the full owner of it, maybe eight, 10 years ago, when, then started working on it.
Thank you. Jan, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councilors. My name is Jan Kailowite. I live in Ward One, the Grand Neighborhood, the Great Grand Neighborhood. I am the vice chair. So if Sam drops dead, I'm in charge. We hope that never happens. For the sake of time, I would like to read a prepared statement in favor of staff recommendation. And I believe you all received copies of that by email or a paper copy earlier. The Grand Neighborhood Association has reviewed the minutes of our monthly meetings. The concerns that we have with the property at 1360 Liberty Street Northeast, which are known as the Coonsy Apartments, began as early as 2005. The discussion has been ongoing whenever the court enforcement, later Compliance Services officers, visited our meetings, which has generally been four times per year. Concerns were initially about the exterior condition of the property, which seemed to never change or improve, including holes, broken fixtures, tar paper siding, debris in the yard, and a generally neglected and dilapidated appearance, along with concerns for what their residents were having to experience. In April of 2011, the discussion took a dire turn with the criminal activity and hostage situation that occurred in March, which required the use of the city SWAT team to extricate four suspects, two of whom were later charged with kidnapping, rape, sexual assault on a teenage girl. The discussions were extensive enough to make it into our meeting minutes on numerous occasions, and culminated in a vote of support on September 1st, 2011, for the city's enforcement actions to remove the license of the owner. And then, maybe for the sake of time, if I will not read all the meeting minutes, but there's 12 meeting minutes quoted, starting in March 2005, June of 2005, September 2005, December 2005, March 2006, September 2006, March 2007, June 2007, September 2007, September 2008, March 2010, and September 2011. I have been on the board of the Grand Neighborhood Association for six or seven years. This has been an issue the entire time I've been there. And so we endorse and recommend staff's enforcement activity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Has the owner ever been to the Neighborhood Association meetings?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Mr. Skilren, did you want to comment?
Madam Mayor and council, again, Sam Skilren from Cottage Street in the Grant Neighborhood. You know, this is very difficult for all of us. We're not against a person. We're not against property rights. We're not against landlords. We're not against businesses. We're for all those things. And we have a strong track record of being for the things that are good. And for whatever reason, this is something that hasn't gotten better. There's been a lot of opportunity to change, countless opportunities to change. Second chances, we all should have second chances. No kidding. Those of us from the faith community, it's all about second chances and third chances and fourth chances. At some point, though, I think, as the mayor pointed out, lives are being impacted here. And we understand the difficulties of finances. We understand the difficulties of owning property. We understand the difficulties of having to make repairs. We're very sensitive to those issues. But kids and families have suffered. And I guess our wake-up call, as Jan testified and as you have in the letter, we had been bringing it up quite a bit. And code enforcement department, compliance services, had been very responsive, and we did it properly and with respect and by the book and got reports and heard about the fines and heard about the court cases. And we kept asking when was going to happen. And we were also polite. And a neighbor called and said, "This property is ruining the lives of kids in our neighborhood. When are you, the Neighborhood Association, going to do something about it?" And we meekly tried to say we have been since 2005. Since 2005, and you haven't had an impact yet? How good is a Neighborhood Association? So we were feeling not pressured, not beat up, not anything, but just challenged and convicted. We know with good conscience, we've been doing some things, but it wasn't enough. And we know with good conscience, the city staff was looking into it properly, going through the right motions, but nothing was changing. And so we know that pulling a license is a very serious matter, and it's not something that's hardly ever done. But sometimes, it has to be done. And if we'd asked about it twice, or three times, or eight times, but, but there's been a good faith effort to make improvement, and for whatever reason, it just hasn't happened. And I guess the confidence level that it would change after tonight, why would tonight be the impetus for change when letter after letter after letter, fine after fine, inspection after inspection, if those things haven't worked? Why would, why would tonight make a difference? So it's with great, with all due respect to one of our neighbors, but with even more respect to those, you know, who might be harmed, we have to support the staff recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skilren. Was there a question? Counselor Clem?
Thanks, Sam. Those people live in Grant and attend schools, shop, work, live, play. Neighborhood Association, I take it is willing to help those folks as well as city and other agencies in, if council doesn't approve the permit to staying in Grant?
Especially where kids are involved, and especially if they're connected to either Grant or Highland Schools. Staying in your school is very important. Mobility is already way too high for many families. So yes, thank you for asking that. We would pledge to help, and we would engage the help of other partners, including the churches and businesses in the neighborhood, to do what we could.
Yeah, let's keep them there. Let's keep them in Great Grant.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have no others signed up to testify. Were there others who wanted to testify? Can I invite them to testify? Yes, if you'll like to, just go to the microphone and state your name and address. And you'll have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you have a minute left after two minutes. And when the red light comes on, your time is up.
My name is Richard Matos, and I live at 1360 Liberty Northeast Apartment Three. I'd like to know what you're going to do for me. The waiting list for Salem Housing Authority for a two-bedroom apartment is over three years long. What are you going to do for me? The only thing that was wrong with my apartment, other than the ramp now, was when they inspected it, they said that the stove was too big, because there was no hood. Larry got me a new stove that would fit. There's nothing wrong with my apartment. And if the city had came and asked me, I would gladly let them look at my property, you know, the place that I rent. Larry put up new siding. He put in all-new windows, double-pane vinyl windows. He's done a lot, and nobody seems to recognize that, because it's all bent on one thing, the revocation of his license. What happens then? And there is no schoolchildren there on any of that property. Anyway, I've said what I came to say. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How long have you lived at the--
I moved in there in, it was in 2003. I moved into that apartment.
And has the city ever come and inspected during the time you've lived there?
Yes, they came into my apartment once, and that's when they said that, that we either had to have a smaller stove or a heat shield. And Larry bought us a smaller stove.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Katie Haynesworth, and I live at 1335 Fourth Street. Our, our home is across the alley from the Coonsy Apartments.
Can you speak right into the microphone? We'll hear you better.
Thanks. And, like I said, our home is across the alley from the Coonsy Apartments. I think for years now, we've had a problem there. And it's things as simple as, as having an appropriate dumpster size. We've had many, many times where their dumpster gets full and starts to overflow, and our dumpster gets stolen and put on their property. And, and there was an incident where we were in the, in the alley, just, I think, cleaning up our property, and someone from the second story threw a bag of what appeared to be human waste into the alley. And we called authorities, and I'm not even sure what ever happened with that. But I'd say the garbage, and I'm worried that the garbage is going to come back, even now, even now, I think, when we saw it this morning, the dumpster was overflowing in garbage piles all around the dumpster. It's, and I'm one of the ones that said I was afraid for the children, because there's giant holes in the yard. And I know my children don't really play outside, but there are neighborhood children that run around, and it wouldn't be unheard of for a child to run into an apartment yard and fall right into the hole that's been there for, for years, from what we've seen. But I guess that's all I have to say. But this is, like I said, an ongoing problem.
Are there questions? Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, hi, Kate. I appreciate the contacts you have made regarding this. I know how, I just appreciate you coming down. I know how difficult this was to come down and talk about this situation and to find City Hall. I'm glad you were able to, especially this part of it. But thank you for, for being a good citizen on this. I really appreciate you taking the time and having the energy and wherewithal to follow up on, on the issues that were disturbing you and related to your family and your investment in your home. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down. We do appreciate the interest and the care that you have for your neighborhood. Thank you. All right. Are there others who wish to testify? All right. Yes, Mr. Wright, you have. Oh, wait a moment.
Questions for staff. And then he gets rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you can have rebuttal, we have questions for staff. So staff, begin, please. Suzanne Daniels, welcome.
Do you guys want me over there in case you want to look at any pictures before I start? Yes? Okay.
Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick questions. Your assessment of the interior of the apartments, the livability of those, how many apartments have you looked at? Is that really part of the rationale for the staff recommendation?
The interior of the apartments at this time is unknown. So that was not my driving factor.
It was the exterior--
It was the exterior, mainly the exterior. And I, the last time I inspected the interior of those apartments was 2007, with a reinspection of some of the apartments in 2008.
So we don't know what the inside looks like?
Correct. I tried to schedule, prior to making this proposal, multiple inspections, so that I could get in and make a better assessment and maybe give some credit there. But I did not get into any of the units.
Because it just wasn't possible due to scheduling?
The property owner never showed to any of the inspections.
Never appeared? You were standing there waiting?
I was standing there waiting. And when I talked to the tenants, they said they had not been served notice of entry, which normally needs to be done within 24 hours.
A couple of times, then, you showed up, and nobody was there?
I showed up five times.
Oh, at least a couple.
And these were scheduled with a letter that went to Larry, or Mr. Wright's property, his business. And normally, in the past, somebody would show up, but these last five times, no one showed.
I see. And my last question, the staff report references a lot of infractions for keeping of junk.
Yes.
Is that related somehow to the dumpster problem that's, that was mentioned a minute ago?
Not only the dumpster, I did see the property today. The dumpster was overflowed. There were two bags of some other substance next to it, large bags. There's also still several tires, lots of stacked fencing that has been, you know, removed or demolished or fell over. There's still a portion of the fence that has fallen over. So those are the items of junk. There's been mattresses, and, as you saw, the toilet. And I did respond to the fecal matter, and it was actually dog waste that I found at the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Did someone else have a question? Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Claussen?
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, Mr. Matos, I think, kind of brought up what I was going to ask about. I'm wondering about the tenants who live there. It sounds like you're willing to help them relocate. And in terms of helping them do that, I'm just wondering, a lot of times, when you move into a place, you have to have first and last month's rent, you have to have a security deposit. How does that work in a situation like this? If they're given 30 days, that's, may not be enough time to secure that amount of money. Is there assistance available for that, or how does that work?
I'm hoping that we can get some of the assistance for, for some of these things through programs that urban development is willing to assist with. I also, because I inspect 21,000 units, I know, obviously, all the landlords that have, are willing to do things that are beyond the norm. And I'm fairly certain that if I talk to them, they will try to at least place most of these people. There's still going to obviously be the same questions they're going to ask, they're going to want, background checks, things like that. But I think we can get them placed.
Counselor Claussen?
First, just to point order, is this our last chance to ask questions of staff? First, just to point out, is this our last chance to ask questions of staff, and then its deliberations after Mr. Wright has a rebuttal period? Okay. I have a couple of questions then, if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
Says point of history, have we ever revoked these licenses in the past?
We have revoked three licenses in the City of Salem. The last, both of those were by Brady Rogers. It's been several years since the last one was revoked. That one had not only issues with the property, it was also a public nuisance for the police department as well. This will be the first time that we've revoked based completely on the history of fail to maintain the property.
Okay. And I'm a little bit unfamiliar with the overall process of what you're able to and not able to do in terms of citations. With this statement, kind of makes sense that revoking the license, the multifamily license, is kind of our next step in terms of enforcement of property, because first we have citations, then we have, well, all the different types of citations and fines, and then the next step is revoking the single-family or the multifamily license in order that the incomes not come in, and you're getting people out of an unsafe situation. What is the next step if things don't happen? Does the property ever become condemned for these types of issues?
In, being that my whole job is to make places safe, this is my last step to actually make people leave. There are steps beyond this. Again, we go right back into the citation process if the people aren't removed. And then after that, if we can actually get entry into the property, we could determine if the property is dangerous. If the buildings itself are dangerous, we could go further.
We would also have the option of going to Circuit Court to get an injunction.
To force them to leave?
Well, to force them basically to prevent from conducting further business on the property.
Okay. All right, and then I guess the last question is, if the license is revoked, I think you mentioned there was 30 days to get the tenants, to provide the tenants with notice to move out, was that, did I understand that right?
Correct.
And then 60 days for tenants to move out total?
30-day notice should be served immediately upon your decision tonight.
Okay.
So it's really only 30 days.
For tenants to move out.
For tenants to move out. I did serve all the tenants' notice on December, or I'm sorry, October 14th, so that they would also be aware of what was happening.
Okay, and then what happens if the repairs were done within 30 days? Could you potentially have the repairs done and people stay?
He could come and apply for a new license. Once the license has been revoked, the license is revoked, and so it would take a new application, new round of inspections.
Thank you, Randall.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions of staff? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions. One, I had asked in regards to inspections of all the units, and was told that you'd seen all of them within the last year. And from what I heard in response to a previous question, it's been at least three to four years.
The last date exactly that I was inside any units was in 2008.
And...
And it was in October.
And at that time, they were compliant, or, meaning after the re-inspect of the one issue with the stove?
Well, actually, the issue on the stove, that was found on the 2003 inspection. The 2007 inspection, I was also back in Mr. Matos' apartment, and I found different issues in his, or inside of his dwelling. Most of the issues were outside of his dwelling, where there's lots of dry rot around those new windows, et cetera. Sorry.
Okay. And have you been in Unit 7?
Yes.
Lately?
No.
Because the owner indicated that there was, had been an interior remodel on that?
It has been repaired since the photos that you saw. What I was showing there was the recurring and the violation that got me there, back there in the first place. But it has been repaired since then. There were several units that I did not pass, and they were told not to rent those. Unit 5, Unit 6, I believe, is upstairs, and then eventually I had to say no one could be in Unit 2 because there was no staircase at all for them to get out of that.
Okay, and now a tough question. If we pull a license and there's no income being generated from the property, the chance of actually having that structure be improved will be lessened. And you will then have a vacant structure, which brings upon itself some interesting ramifications as well. If we were allowed in to inspect every unit within the next week, all of those were either up to speed or those items were identified, and then the property owner indicated four to six months, I would say, four at a maximum, to have all of those completed, would that be a better outcome than removing people and having it go vacant?
I think that, excuse me, I think that staff member Vicki Woods is trying to maybe help answer your question here.
If I may, I'd like to answer that question. Vicki Hardenwood is Community Development Director. Our concern, it's extreme for us to revoke a license, and it does put an onus on someone who's trying to get enough money in order to fix up property that desperately needs to be fixed up. But our concern in this case, and I think you heard it from the neighborhood, is we have worked with this property owner for years and years and years. And it takes an extreme circumstance before we come before you like this. And if we were to give a continuance here and then fail at that, I think the confidence of the neighborhood would be shaken in our ability to be able to make enforcement and actually use the license for the purpose for which we have it. So the answer to your question from my perspective is no. I don't think that would be a better outcome.
Okay. May I ask a question in regards to that? Knowing that this has been going on for almost a decade, and knowing that people at times have an issue with inertia and just move through until they hit a crisis moment, which I would consider having my license revoked a crisis moment, that tends to encourage people to finally do what they should do. And I don't want to necessarily cast away that option right now, knowing how long the property has been in some state of non-conformity. So that would be my only question in regards to, if it comes up to speed and it's good in four months, isn't that better for us than we kick everybody out and it sits there for a year or two years vacant, and we have vandalism and more of a negative impact?
Counselor, that's a policy issue for you to answer. Our recommendation is that you revoke this license.
Thank you.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You said it earlier, but I'm not sure I got it all. How many property owners do you work with in multifamily? You stated the number of units, but I'm really interested in...
How many property owners? You know, I don't remember.
How many licenses do we have? 300?
There's about, yeah, around 1,000.
Okay.
Not all of those are separate property owners. There might be multiple properties.
Okay, and you work with hundreds or at least dozens of property owners?
Yeah, I've seen, in the five years I've been doing this, I have been to every single complex in town.
And it's your professional belief that we've gotten to that point with this property that continuing on is not in the best interest of the public?
Based on the fact that every repair that needed permit was done without permit, based on the fact that every repair that I have seen that has been done has been done improperly or not finished, I, yes, I completely support revoking the license. And I don't take that lightly.
Counselor Clausen?
Along that lines, in your professional opinion, I guess is the right way to ask, what do you see as the outcome of this? I mean, revoking the license, as Counselor Nanki mentioned, suspends income to the owner, which makes the repairs much more difficult. I guess what is the, what is the outcome? What do we get out of it? I'm not real familiar with multifamily housing. Is the incentive there to get the license back? Is the incentive there to get them, that owner, out of the property? Or I guess I don't totally understand, or I'm just trying to grasp the whole picture.
My hope would be that Mr. Wright would make these repairs in a timely fashion and then come in and get a license and start working with us again. That would be my personal professional opinion. It's certainly possible.
Thank you.
Are there further questions of staff? Counselor Nanki?
Just another quick, too. Licensing is, how often, as far as renewals and what have you?
Renewals are yearly. They're due every December. It's a minimal amount per unit. And then the inspections are done every five years for large complexes, well, for any complex, and then homeless shelters, hotels, and stuff, I go into every year.
Okay, and then second question in regards to permitted or permitting requirements for multifamily versus a single-family residential homeowner. Is there a big difference?
There is a difference where if residential, a single-family home, if they want to replace their siding, there is a percentage that they can remove or replace without a permit. When you own a commercial enterprise, such as a multifamily complex, then you are operating a business, and therefore you need, you're operating a commercial business that requires a license for all these repairs. Siding, windows, roofs.
And if, when you go out and write up, you know, a non-compliance issue, inside of that, does it specify that the repairs need to be made and a permit needs to be garnered?
Yes, I have copies of it right in front of me. It's kind of scribbled all over, but yes, every single time that, on this particular case, I put with permit because I knew there had been work done prior.
And one last one, because I had asked earlier, can a permit be received by someone other than the owner of the property?
If they're the contractor for that property.
And what are your requirements for them to be considered a contractor?
I don't work for the permit department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilors. My name is Brady Rogers. I'm the administrator of the Neighborhood Enhancement Division. Contractors of record can obtain permits on behalf of the owner. They do need written permission from the owner, and they do have to be licensed contractors for the specialty for which they're applying. So general contractors for structural, plumbing contractors for plumbing, mechanical for mechanical systems.
If I can follow up on that one, and the items that we're looking at here are across the board to where one contractor, handyman type, wouldn't have been able to do all of those items, correct?
That would be correct, and the, obtaining the permits for the, the required permits for the windows in and of itself is very important in terms of installing true egress windows in all the bedrooms. There's a, there's a system in place that will automatically ensure the safety of the tenants of such buildings.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your very thorough report. Okay, Mr. Wright, if you would like, you have five minutes.
Madam Mayor, counsel.
Seven minutes.
I shouldn't take that long. When we were informed that certain permits had to be pulled, we did go get them. We got the window permits. They were inspected, approved. We got the siding permits. It was inspected, it was improved. We got, I had to get the engineering for the retaining walls for the stairs. That was $4,000. We got the permits. Those were approved. We built them according, the front steps are now built according to those plans. We went through the various inspections, the stepwise, the wall halfway up, the reinforcement, the other half, the forms, the forms I had to tear out that the other person did because they were not good. I hired a different contractor, the forms and the front stairs were poured. So all of this work that has been done, even though some of the permits were after the fact, because we didn't know about them at first, have been done with permits, with inspections, with approvals. As far as the garbage is concerned, there is a big dumpster, there's only four people putting stuff in. There's a lot of, in that neighborhood, a lot of people dump. We're getting the things locked so people cannot dump, drive down the alley and dump things. As far as the police raid, the people who were arrested after they shot out all the windows were guests of a tenant. They were not my tenants. So all I can say is, you know, over the last three years, in good faith, a lot of work has been done, a lot of money has been spent, and we're getting close to completion.
All right, we will now close, close the public hearing. Counselor Bennett, will you make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the testimony this evening really spoke for itself, but this, this has gone on for years. I think the question of safety for the tenants, of safety and quality of life for tenants and the neighborhood, you can kind of run through all of the issues associated with it, but I think Suzanne summed it up quite well, that it's just one contact, one missed opportunity after another, and the opportunity missed was the owner's opportunity to do this right. At some point along the way, if there was just some record other than violations, missed appointments, failure to pay fines, I mean, the list just goes on and on. I heard about this property from an email, from a neighbor, and I asked about it at the neighborhood group, and it was like, oh, yeah, that place. And this was in September or August or September, and I was unaware of this, someone over and took a look, and the pictures don't do it justice. I'll be honest with you. The problems there are really stunning, and all I could do was look at the outside. Apparently, that's all our inspectors can do, is look at the outside of that building. My biggest concern, I'll tell you though, about this, is the impact of this on tenants. And I have asked about it since I contacted Brady and Suzanne about my concerns that I had run into through constituent concerns, is that there be absolutely a concerted effort to make sure, and I believe there will be, after numerous conversations with the city manager and other staff persons, that nobody from that apartment house that qualifies in any way for housing of any sort find themselves homeless at Christmas. That would be without a doubt the worst outcome for this, and that has me genuinely concerned. So I hope that in, just if nothing else, the spirit of the season, there is an absolutely, absolute concerted effort, make sure these people have housing, affordable housing, appropriate housing. This isn't appropriate. I don't know if it's affordable, but I really urge you to support the motion tonight. This has just gone on long enough, and so, appreciate it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Clem?
Yes, I'll support the motion, and I seconded it for a variety of reasons that have already been stated, but I'm just concerned that it's not the tenants' fault that they don't pay enough rent that these repairs can't be made faster. The testimony offered led me to believe that it couldn't be fixed in 30 or 60 days because it would take four to six months of collecting rent to make the repairs, when particularly folks on fixed incomes or lower incomes are now the sub... folks on fixed incomes or lower incomes are now the subject of their own rent and their own rent alone, whose apartment building is it? So I, I think we, just as a reminder, we created this multifamily licensing program to get at improving the quality of life and making sure it's at a bare minimum for everybody in Salem. And it's unfortunate that this one has gone as far as it has, but I, I heartily support the motion.
Thank you. Further comment? All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to adopt the staff recommendation to remove the license, revoke the license on this particular property. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Bob, did you, are you there?
Yes, I am. I've worked here.
Oh, thank you very much. All right. Okay. We'll regroup ourselves for a moment here. We have some ordinances and new business and motions to come.
Is that Angry Birds?
All right. I think, oh, we have, Chuck is away for a minute. Okay.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, up here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
While we're, while we're in a pause right now, Mr. Cooley from Comcast didn't get a chance to sign up under public comment, item 10. And so he just mentioned to me that he does want to speak.
Item 10. Oh, all right. All right. We will re-adjourn here, or reassemble. We will now have ordinances. First reading, will the city recorder please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 3611 relating to the Portland Fairgrounds Road Overlay Zone amending SRC 143B 020, 143B 140, 143B 150, and 143B 160 and adopting revisions to the City of Salem Development Design Handcode, Handbook, excuse me.
Thank you. Counselor Dickey, this is in your ward. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I move that the city council schedule for public hearing ordinance Bill Number 3611 amending SRC Chapter 143B Portland Fairgrounds Overlay Zone and the Development Design Handbook to remove the Rose Gardens Mixed Use Area, Area 2 from the Portland Fairgrounds Road Overlay Zone and that the city council schedule a public hearing for this.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Bennett for the city council to schedule the public hearing for this property as noted in Ordinance 9.1A. Counselor Dickey, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, thank you. The report provided by staff identifies three alternatives for processing the proposed amendments. The alternative recommended by staff is to refer the amendments to the Planning Commission for public hearing. And I want to be really clear, you know, 99.9% of the time, that is exactly what I would recommend. We've already discussed this, however, as a council. And so we've already kind of made our intentions clear about this issue. And I think that it's appropriate that we have the public hearing. If it was referred to the Planning Commission, we'd end up having two public hearings on the same issue with likely the same individual showing up to testify. So I think this just makes it the most efficient process to get this done.
Thank you. All right. Is there further discussion? All right, hearing none. We'll move for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Second reading, will the recorder please read the ordinance?
Yes. And then I'll take a roll call vote in rotation. It'll be started with Counselor Cannon tonight. Ordinance Bill Number 3411 relating to the City of Salem Ward Boundaries amending SRC 11231 and declaring an effective date. Counselor Cannon?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler is absent. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. It is duly enacted through an unanimous vote. All right. We will now move to public comment. And we have a gentleman who has tremendous patience, forbearance, attention to duty. We appreciate you being here. Mr. Doug Cooley has signed up to testify this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Doug Cooley, I work for Comcast Corporation at 1710 Salem Industrial Drive Northeast here in Salem. This is more of an announcement, I guess, and I don't want to make it a Comcast commercial, but an opportunity to share something that's maybe of concern to the council and maybe get some ideas about how to help spread the word. Comcast has a program where they are making available broadband or internet access to individuals or households who have a child that qualifies for the free school lunch program, a national program. And thank you for making those handouts available. We've been trying to spread the word to make this available, to get the word out to schools through charitable organizations in the community. And we'll be doing some other outreach, but wanted to make the council aware that this program exists in the community. Obviously, there's been a lot of studies about broadband access and how it helps students in their education, helps keep the parents of students in touch with the student's education, and helps citizens participate in government, both state, local, and federal, and many other things for job hunting or any other programs that are, that are available. A lot of things are done online. And students, particularly is where we aimed this program at and piggybacked on the federal program, were a concern to Comcast. So we are trying to, trying to make this program available for $9.95 if they qualify for broadband. Also, it comes with some training that's available in print, in person, and online. And also a computer, I was going to say probably a device because some of those are smaller laptop versions of devices that can be acquired for $149.95. So mostly, I wanted to make the council aware of this and perhaps get some ideas about other ways that we can help get this, the word out there through the proper channels and proper organizations. And with that, I would answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Dickey and Counselor Thomas, and then Counselor Nanki.
Well, thanks so much for coming down with this. I heard about a program like this a few months ago. It was the first program. It was a city back east. And I was really excited to hear that groups were doing that. One of the issues that we have when we work with kids at school is that we put a lot of things online. We put their grades online so their parents can take a look at it. We, we just require so much of them. And also, if these kids are getting free lunch, their parents probably need access online as well that they're not getting. So this provides that. I mean, looking for a job, it's almost impossible to do that today without a computer. And so I'm just really pleased that you guys are, that have this program. And I think it's going to be a great benefit to our community.
Counselor Thomas?
I just want to piggyback what Counselor Dickey said. I was in Des Moines, Iowa for Women's Legislative Conference, and they gave us a bunch of these. And so they're really promoting it. And so I brought some back. And I was promoting it. So I should be a spokesperson for this.
Very good. Thank you.
Just a suggestion to get the word out. You may want to go in and talk with the superintendent for the Salem Kaiser School District and have them be a supporter. Also, Sam Skilern was here earlier. He'd be a good person also to get that information too. And just, you know, network with all the, the DHSs and those places, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Doug.
My pleasure.
As Counselor Thomas suggested, this is a nationwide project?
That's correct, Counselor, yes.
And are we, most of the time, we hear about it being the rural urban divide. Are we marketing that through the counties right now? We talk to the county commissioners and try to find other ways to push the message out to those kids who may live outside of, you know, city limits?
That's an excellent question, Counselor. We have been approaching different organizations, including the county. I haven't stopped at their county commission meetings yet, but do have it on my, on my calendar. So I will have discussions with Marion County and others. And you're absolutely right to your point about sometimes there are individuals who can't get broadband because of the distance, you know, outside of, outside of city boundaries or whatever. We found through various studies, the FCC and the Pew Institute and several others, that there are a much larger group of individuals who can get broadband but can't afford it. And so we're focusing on mostly that. This particular program, it would be available in the Comcast footprint. If we don't reach out into those more rural areas, this particular program wouldn't be available to them. But there may be others through other companies.
So this is only where your lines currently go?
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Cooley, thank you so much for bringing this information to us and for the brochure. And I particularly appreciate that on one side is English and one side is Spanish. We have, I think, maybe 54 foreign languages spoken by families in our Salem Kaiser School District. If you have brochures in other languages, we probably could distribute those as well. But that's a great idea. I'm glad to see that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay. We are ready for Counselors' Items. And we have a Counselor's Item brought forward by Counselor Clausen. Would you like to make your motion?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. The motion feels a little awkward. If I can get a second, I'd like to speak to it.
Second.
Let me read the motion first. Thanks, Cheryl. So my motion is, I move that in accordance with the notice given to the council meeting as of November 7th, 2011, Exhibit 1, Page 1, Paragraph A of Resolution Number 21143 be amended to read as follows. Except as provided in this paragraph, the fees and charges set out in the fee schedule are effective July 1st, 2011, and apply to all applications and plans admitted after July 1st, 2011. The cross-connect fee shall be implemented on January 1st, 2013.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Clausen and seconded by Counselor Thomas, actually. Yes, Counselor Thomas. Counselor Clem, Counselor Clausen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Thank you. So I've had some conversations with a couple of counselors. I purposely not talked to everybody, trying to keep the conversation on the floor tonight as much as possible. There's been other conversations surrounding. I know there's an article in the paper. And I just want to be real clear that at issue here is the implementation of this backflow fee, moving it from January 1st, 2012 to January 1st, 2013. That is simply what the motion does. There are other connotations that go along with it. And so as discussion on this, my issue has to do with the fact that we set a water sewer rate based with certain costs to the system. The rate is set to go for multiple years and then it's readjusted to, or it's looked at again to look at those costs that are in the system and then allocate the rate appropriately. So in, in my opinion, the reason I'm making this motion, this is a fee that's already covered under the rate. And to break the fee out and add it on top of the rate means, in my opinion, we're, we're charging twice for the same service. So this is something that I'll straight up admit, I missed it in the June 27th. I missed it when we had the chance to read the letter. And the first time I heard about it is when my wife smacked me on the back of the head with my letter and said, where's my rate decrease? And then since then, I started to get some calls and emails from my constituents. So straight up, I missed it. I don't think that's an excuse to let it go by a third time for me. That's the reason I'm bringing it up. So I want us to talk about it. I think this also speaks to a larger issue that we do need to speak about as council, whether it be in a work session or whether it's referred to Finance Committee. And just how our fees are implemented and how our fees correspond to our revenues. Because we have revenue shortfalls coming up. Politically, what does it do to us when we stack fees on fees on fees on fees? What does that do to us in the long run if we really get to a point where we need more revenue? And it could be looking like it could be happening in three or four years while a bunch of us are on council still. So, but again, to be clear, this is just simply the implementation of that fee. If we go further as council, that's what we would do in the future. So that's my motion. I would be happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
All right. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a substitute motion. I move we refer the question of council direction to staff on fees generally to the Finance Committee with expectation we'll have a recommendation and a work session for city council on the broad issue of fees.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I really appreciate what Counselor Clausen is saying. And as he pointed out, all of us voted for this fee. It's part of a policy or a direction that council has put on staff to begin moving discretionary situations where city taxpayers or ratepayers have discretion from the tax base or the, the fee, the larger rate issue and start charging fees. It's a, it's a fundamental question of how we're going to pay for, for things. We could as easily be saying right now, the motion that could be the other motion on the table, the former motion on the table if this one passes, I could as easily say, why are we charging fees on Pringle Hall when Pringle Hall is paid for out of the park fund, which comes out of the general fund, which comes off taxes? We ought to be lower in taxes every time we raise a fee. That's, the logic on this is one that I think we need to look at. We, on, on June 27th, passed hundreds of fees. And this one caught somebody's attention. And I have no doubt, it's, it's a worthwhile debate. That isn't my problem. And I, I don't have wild disagreements with Counselor Clausen on this. But we aren't going back and looking at the hundreds of fees we passed, looking for the same kind of fact situation Counselor Clausen has assigned to his motion. All I'm asking you tonight is to take the time to take a look at our fee, our direction to the city manager and the staff on fees, so that we follow some sort of coherent policy. And we don't do things like pass a motion unanimously, June 27th, raising a fee, be asked a couple months later, should we mail out a letter and tell the staff, yes? And then, if it feels even slightly controversial, let's take it back. After we've mailed 9,000 letters, have another 4,000 sitting in the mailbag to go out about a fee increase. a fee increase. It kind of no way to run a railroad, and we haven't run a railroad this way before. We have instructed the staff to look at fees following this kind of policy direction. If we want to change it, we ought to follow the kinds of processes we do on these kinds of issues, and it may well be that this is one that needs to be reversed. It needs to never have come up. We need to make sure that rates reflect these kind of fee changes. I have no argument with that kind of discussion, but I'd sure like to have that kind of discussion and not just do this because somebody got five or 10 emails. It's more important than that, it's more serious than that, and as you saw last week with the kind of revenue projections we're looking at, it's much more critical for a whole range of programs we do, to make sure we do this kind of direction right. So I really strongly encourage you to follow the kind of approach we've always followed, which is think about it first. Now apparently, that didn't happen on this fee increase for some folks, but I'd like you to stop now, and let's go back and look at this very carefully. So I hope you'll support the motion.
Who seconded that motion?
Councilor Thomas.
No, that was for the first...
No, I'm talking about the... I'm talking about...
The substitute.
Councilor Bennett's motion. The comment that I'd like to make is that I will be voting to not delay the implementation of the fee, and I go back to the staff report dated June 27th, and on page 3 of that staff report where this fee is discussed, it's Item I, it's number 6I, and it's called the cross-connect fee (backflow). And it does say very clearly, "This service had been provided at no additional cost to applicants in past years, but is now separated to more fairly distribute actual staff costs." So in voting for this in the first time around, I didn't see it as a duplication of fees, and I don't believe that it is a duplication of fees. I think it is simply clear, clearly, the recognition that there are a group of people who do receive a certain city service, which is, by the way, federally mandated, not something we choose to do, it's something we have to do. And it seemed like a more fair allocation of the staff work that has to happen in order to do that processing of the backflow fee, the backflow information. So that's why I would be voting to not delay the implementation of the fee. Councilor Clem, and then Councilor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish the motion was an amendment, because I think the process by... I would agree with Councilor Bennett completely. The process, we looked at the fees. I'm not so sure that there aren't more. If we're going to question one, you know, we should question all of them. But again, I wish that was an amendment. I do see it as a collection of the $15 a month or a year for the backflow device prevention program, which is currently funded out of general fund revenues this year without the fee. So that's the part that's got me confused here.
I think it's not general fund. Councilor...
Oh, I'm sorry, water sewer fund. It's already in the rates this year. Is that correct, Linda?
All of the operating costs that are not fee-supported are in the current rates that we have.
Current rate structure now, and that's why I concur with Rich here, that we've already collecting the money to pay for the folks to manage the program, which we lawfully have to do. The whole idea that we're sort of building up a reserve... I'm not sure I'd agree that it's maybe a duplication of fees, but we're building up a reserve January of 2012 through at least June 2012. And some could look at that as collecting fees before you really need them, so is there a need to collect the fee, Linda, before you have the FTE expense? Is that our current policy?
Well, I'll ask Mr. Fernandez to talk about that.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor Peter Fernandez, interim deputy city manager. The expense is already there. We already have the two staffers that it takes to work this issue as required. What we have is a situation where this year, we're facing a $2.5 million less in revenues than we had anticipated in the water sewer fund. As we discussed the other day in the Budget Committee meeting, we continue to have issues with allocating money for capital, and there is just, you know, less and less money. So this fee pays for the staffers and the program that we have to have. My prediction in the coming budget year is that we will have to propose reductions in the water sewer fund. Those reductions will either be in capital construction, or they will be in staff, materials, and services, just given the revenue situation that we're in. So the thought in proposing this fee is, this is a program that we have to do no matter what, so that is a program that would then be self-funded, and we could then... It's an additional reduction that we wouldn't have to consider in the coming years.
Well, the question is more centered toward the policy. Do we build up reserves in funds in any fee structure before we have the expense?
We already have the expense. I mean, we're already expending this money.
Out of rates, though.
It's coming out of rates, that's right.
Okay, so if we collect January of 2012 through June of 2012, we're collecting for something that's already covered by rates, hence the duplication of...
Well, it's already... That is correct, Councilor. It's already budgeted, but because we're $2.5 million behind on projected revenues, there are cuts that... There are savings that we're going to have to do already, and cuts that we're going to have to propose in the budget. So we're not amassing any money. In fact, we're behind, just with respect to revenue. So that's where this proposal comes from.
Well, and hence the reason I'd love to support the motion if it were an amendment, that is, this one fee does not make the $2.5 million thing whole. So based on your logic, Mr. Fernandez, it seems like we ought to be looking at a whole lot of fees if we're worried about the $2.5 million. It's not a cut, it's not a loss or a deficit, it's less than what you had anticipated.
There are many ways that we could go, and we could do it through more fees, and the water sewer fund charges many, many fees for many kinds of programs. What we have here is a specialty program with a defined user group that's, you know, it's not system-wide, it's very defined user group, and because we can't cut it, you know, it's a program that we cannot, by state law, cut by providing its own revenue source, it's a program that we, in essence, could set aside with its own revenue and then look at the rest of the system, where if we have, you know, for example, if we had to cut... I'm just making the numbers up right now, five people, well, those two I can't cut, so by funding those two, then I'd only have to cut three people. So that's the theory behind it.
Or capital improvements, as opposed to...
Or capital, or any combination thereof, but I'm just trying to make the math simple as to where the theory comes from.
Okay. I have several people who've raised their hands, and I believe I have Bennett, and then Nanki, and then Clausen, and Dickey. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just also, in response to Councilor Clem's questions, which I think are really good ones, I appreciate that you would vote for this as an amendment. I think you'd be right on the money voting for it as the main motion as well, and I'll... The thing that I think you'd find, and I believe we'll find out, if we take the time and apply the kind of critical thinking that I think, Councilor Clausen, you are applying to this single issue, is that there is a broader policy question inside of the fee structure. The arguments you're making about this fee could apply to every fee that we impose, and particularly to those that we impose as a result of some sort of external requirement, some sort of mandate. This isn't one where you can draw a line between this piece of the rate and this cost. Those two are not going to hit. That's not how these fees, that's not how this portion of it was adopted. I've been bemused by the discussion of, well, I should get my rate lowered 40 cents a month or a year, or whatever. You know, I'm still boggled by the 15 cent a year outrage, or $15 a year outrage I'm hearing from some folks, but that's not how this occurs. This occurs based on a whole variety of issues built into the rate, and what the cost is for the capital, and as I think the assistant city... Whatever his title is now, the former Public Works Director.
He is the acting deputy city manager.
Okay, interim deputy city manager, but I'm looking at him still as a public works guy. I think he is explaining it really well. You can kind of look at this thing any way you want. We're still $2, $2.5 million short in meeting the legitimate need of the water and sewer system in this city. And maybe it's just because I represent the old part of town, not the new part of town where they put in underground sprinklers. That's not our problem. Our problem is exploding water lines, basements flooded by sewer lines. That's the kind of stuff we're facing, and that's the kind of stuff that gets paid for with these funds. I'm having trouble, because there's so many issues, you know, kind of getting into the issues. All I'm asking is, take the time to do this right instead of on the fly, which is what this motion represents. We've had, or I think the councilor's motion represents. Good motion, great politics, great politics. Good motion, great politics. Might be very wrong-headed policy, we just don't know. And the reason you feel so comfortable with my motion as an amendment, I think, is because you know we need to look at this real closely before we proceed with this kind of really irreversible direction that could have impacts, and I think real serious policy impacts, on every fee discussion we have in the future. We ought to have that calmly, intelligently, looking for fairness, looking for the kind of economies that I think Councilor Clausen is talking about, representing the discussion I heard from a couple of fellows who got up and talked about how much cheaper it can be done in different ways. I mean, I'm sure all that ought to go on, but I really think we ought to have an intelligent discussion before we just start racing off on this kind of stuff. That's what I'm asking you to join me in.
Councilor Nanki, then Councilor Clausen, and then Councilor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll agree we need to look at fees in general, but at issue here isn't comparable fees for renting Pringle Park structure and general fund-type things. This is a dedicated fund, and like it or not, which I don't, we set our rates two years ago for those things that we were going to need to do, and we knew that we would take some hits because of that, and we lost several people this last year because of 0% for this year, and then 3% for the next year. That being said, popping a fee off sideline is a little different than things that we've been charging for, all facility rentals, or... I mean, this is popping one out, and we've been working for the last several months on cost-of-service analysis, and how we divvy up funds from groups based on benefits and economic activities, and then, you know, this one kind of just jumps out the top, and I know we sent letters out, and it makes us look bad. And I was reading another book last night that was quoting Eleanor Roosevelt, where it says, "Vote, or do what your heart tells you to do, because they're going to damn you either way, one side or the other. They'll damn you if you do, and they'll damn you if you don't." This one just feels really icky to me now, as far as, you know, through the rates, and then we just pull it out sideways. It's less than 10% of our revenue shortfall. You can deal with it that way. We have issues with the whole water sewer franchise fee and what's going to happen when stormwater comes out, and I know a lot of the people who are complaining about this fee are the same people who have issues with the other. But shooting a kind of a sideways fee at them right now, in my opinion, doesn't do us any favors for the long-term conversation either.
Councilor Clausen?
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping we wouldn't get diverged and sidetracked here, but I'm going to try and address at least a few of the things that were spoken about here since I made my motion. As the IDCM, interim deputy city manager, Fernandez said. IDCM, there we go. Now we won't forget it. As you mentioned, the intent of this was to make a little bit extra money to fill the $2.5 million shortfall. We, as council, need to be so clear and upfront with our ratepayers. And I'm going to say ratepayers, because remember, this whole question is only about the rates of the utility of the water and sewer. It's the only thing that this motion is bringing up. It is not talking about other fees, it's not talking about things that are tax-based, that's a totally different animal. This is a utility that we operate as the city of Salem. It used to be a private utility that Salem bought. This is a private... This is a utility that could be private, and we have to be so upfront with our ratepayers, who are also our taxpayers. Because if we're $2.5 million short, as Mr. Fernandez says, then what we should be doing is not trying to get $200,000 here, we should be putting an operating fee on there to raise $2.5 million. If we're trying to make money, and we're needing money to make our system work, we need to be so clear and upfront. The other issue that Councilor Bennett brought up is, we're breaking process here. I totally disagree with that, respectfully. I feel like June 27th, we put that on the agenda, it was part of a 50 or 64-page document. Eight lines of the 64-page document were dedicated to this. There was no discussion about the implementation schedule and what it means, so it was not made abundantly clear to council what the implementation means on this. And so then what we did, we sent out a letter. I didn't catch it in the letter, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Why did we send out the letter? To solicit public feedback in case there was an issue, so we don't surprise them with a fee. That was the next step in the process. The last step in the process is we got feedback, and I responded to the feedback. I feel like we're still in the midst of the process. This is the right process for local governments to take. It's clear, it's forthright, it gives people the opportunity to give feedback. We've followed the process. So don't let Pringle Hall confuse you, that is a general... That is a property tax-based fund, that is totally different deal. This is a utility that we operate, fixed costs, fixed revenues. We don't have a lot of room to wiggle and move here. Yeah, maybe we do, because we can operate it like a private company, but that's going to burn us with our voters. It's going to burden us with our ratepayers if we ever have to come back and really make some money here. So I strongly urge you, we are following the process. I agree with Councilor Bennett, this does lead to the longer, the bigger-picture conversation. This is isolated. There were seven new fees in the water and sewer rate. There were 32 brand-new fees of the 200-odd fees we approved June 27th. Seven fees in the water sewer rate. The other six fees were things like, if you have a blocked meter, it costs you this much to come fix it. There were things that were not a quantifiable piece that the Public Works can put to a cost. They're not a quantifiable piece. That's where fees make sense. If you have a blocked meter, you can't say, "Well, I think I'm going to have 15 of them this year. I think I'm going to have 30 of them this year." You set a fee for it. With this, it's a fixed cost that we know about, it's in the rate, cost-of-service analysis accounts for it. It's done. We're going out, and by implementing this before rates are updated, we're grabbing the money twice. So in my opinion, it's right for us to take this and just change... I'm not arguing the fee, we're just changing the implementation of the fee. This is the logical conclusion of the process of implementing this new fee. And if we don't have the stomach to stand up and follow through on the process, I think we're doing our constituents wrong, we're doing our ratepayers wrong. So I would urge a no vote on this, and I'd be willing to amend my motion afterwards to include the part of this, if so desired by everybody else, so that we get it on paper that we're going to be looking at these fees. So I would encourage a no vote, and I would be very happy to amend the original motion.
Just, I want to check with our city attorney on the process of that. Is that allowable?
It requires a second.
It would require a second.
Then you'd vote on the amendment, and then you would proceed to the main motion. You don't...
Could I offer a substitute motion now? Could I offer a substitute motion now?
We already have a motion on the floor.
We had a motion, then we had a substitute.
And we have a counselor waiting to speak.
Yes, he can make, you can have two amendments on the floor. A substitute motion is just a form of amendment. And a substitute motion strikes out all the text of the pending motion, replaces it with other text.
I'll leave it for now.
Is that what you want to do?
But I think it's clear what I want. I think it's clear I want to vote no on this, and then we can back up the original motion.
Is that right?
Yes. You would. If the motion fails, then you go back to the original motion.
If the motion passes, then the motion on the floor is it?
Is it. That's correct.
Okay, Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Clem.
Thanks, Mayor. I would urge you to vote on Counselor Bennett's motion. I think we do need to take a good look at all of these fees. And I understand that this, the original motion is only for this particular fee. But one thing that really jumps out at me, I'm hearing a lot about, we need to be upfront and we need to be transparent to our constituents. 9,000 letters went out. What about the other 49,000 ratepayers who had no idea they were paying for people's luxury? I consider underground sprinkler a luxury item. What about all those other ratepayers who are footing the bill for that? I think that, especially in this economy, people who are struggling to make ends meet might be willing to pay an extra, whatever it is, 15 cents a month to ensure that they get good, clean, safe water, that the water pipes don't explode on their street or that kind of thing, and would not be happy to find out that they have been supplementing the inspections for somebody else's luxury item. So, and there probably are other fees where that is the case. I think if I would have known that this was the case before, I might have brought this up two and a half years ago. I don't know. So anyway, I think we definitely need to look at how we implement these things. I had the same feeling as the mayor when I originally read through that in June. I saw that it was just, it seemed like something new. So that's, I'm just really thinking about, you know, the 49,000 other customers who didn't get a letter and what would they be saying right now.
Counselor Clem?
No, I have a comment that I'd like to make, just to reiterate, that I don't view this as a fee that has been brought as a sort of a side fee. It was all done in the normal process of the work of the City Council and the City of Salem. In the Public Works Department Fees Report, it says, "Each year, council adopts a resolution to establish permit and service fees for the Public Works Department." And this is what the document looked like, and the fees are all itemized in here. We had full knowledge in June of what we were passing, or we should have. And furthermore, we did even second-guess ourselves for a moment along about, what, August, was it, City Manager? Where we looked again and said, yes, we're going to go forward with this. This is what we meant to do. This is the right thing to do. And with regard to the letter that we encouraged and we appreciated Peter Fernandez and the City Manager coming to the council and saying, "Seems like we really need a letter that really explains this well," that at that point, what we were sending out was a letter that informed them about the fees that the council had already passed. It was not a letter soliciting their input, "How do you feel about this fee?" So I want to be clear about that letter, unless I'm wrong about the purpose of the letter and the language of the letter.
It was for notice.
It was for notice.
That's correct.
That we had already adopted these fees.
That's correct.
Yeah, and we wanted them to know well ahead of time that that was coming. Okay, so those were my comments, and I believe Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in regards to the fees and equity, again, going back to the COOPAC meetings, I mean, we're recommending that a fixed fee be put in place for fire protection, which is a big chunk of money that's moving around. And I suppose that the biggest piece is, if we talk about those people who have been paying for things, every residential property in this city has been paying for the equivalent stormwater for all the commercial activities in town. They have large, impervious surfaces. And we, as a committee, elected not to change that rate until it starts the phase-in in 2013. And that's big money. We're talking 3% per residential customer. So this, we've been, you know, as an entirety, paying this $15 a year, broken up by, you know, 150,000 users, is nothing compared to fees that we're already pushing out because we know of their impact. So if people want to yell about something, they should be yelling about that disparity rather than something that was rolled into the rates when we set them, which we knew was inside, and just letting that come up as we go through and actually set the new cost of service and line that out to them. Yeah, the original report, I remember seeing it, and I know I've been, we're stewards of the services we provide to the city. We're also stewards of the voters, and not just the voters, all the residents in our wards and in the city. The fact that we had an issue with rates and got a zero, I would have preferred 3% and 3%. Because why, general fund can dive, and we look at the infrastructure and how we haven't been taking care of it. This is one fund that we can take care of. I mean, that's what keeps water pipes from blowing up. That's what keeps, you know, buildings from crumbling. That's why we're looking at seismic issues, and we're looking at, and looking at, and we used to have the big wall of shame out here, as John Elegant used to roll it out here. The water sewer fund, we can take care of. And by those rates being dipped like that, yeah, we took a hit. Myself personally, it's like, well, I know we need the money in there, and that's why I voted for it originally. But looking at what it does from an equity standpoint, I can't accept that now. But I still do want to talk about all those fees because I think there's things we can do, and in several of the emails and staff's response to them, there's good ideas coming out of those citizens on how we can actually improve and make ourselves more efficient. But again, this one just drives me crazy now.
Counselor Clem?
Just clarification on the city attorney's guidance a minute ago. Could an amendment still be proffered that offered both motions that council delay until January 1st and also convene a work session?
You can make a motion to amend the substitute motion. You can have two amendments on the floor at the time. You vote on them in serium. So you vote on the amendment first, and you go back and you vote on, you vote on the amendment to the amendment first, and you go back to vote on the amendment. And then with a substitute motion, if that substitute motion passes, you're done. And if it fails, then both of those amendments go away, and you're back to the original motion, to the main motion.
Yeah, and I would offer that amendment at this time. Hopefully, it'll get seconded, that we delay the rate increase till January 1st, 2013, and that we also convene work session for the purpose of fee-setting for the current and for the future budget years.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Thomas to amend the amended motion to delay the fee-
Substitute motion.
To amend the substitute motion to delay the implementation of the fee until January 2013 and to schedule a future work session on fees and their establishment.
And I heard in the motion, it was current fees as well as future fees, or did you mean future fees?
I mean, future fees. Thank you for the clarification.
All right.
I think enough's been discussed. I would simply-
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by-
Counselor Thomas.
Seconded by Counselor Thomas.
And I would just call for the question.
Counselor Clem, would you, you just want to call for the motion? Yes, Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification because this was an amendment to the substitute motion. So the substitute motion is there, and some of that was reworded by the maker of the amendment. So I would like to know what the substitute was actually stipulating.
My understanding of your motion, Counselor Clem, is that you were simply saying, delay the implementation until next-
January 2013.
But otherwise, the text of Counselor Bennett's motion remains the same.
That's correct.
Which is to go to Finance Committee.
Go to Finance Committee.
Not to schedule a work session, but to go-
Not to schedule a work session, but to go to Finance Committee.
But to go to the Finance Committee. Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. All right, nays, raise your hand. Counselor Claus, Counselor Cannon, how were you voting? I couldn't hear.
I voted in favor of the supplemental motion that had been amended by Counselor Clem.
All right. Will the recorder call the roll?
Aye. She has to read it.
She hasn't called yet. Give her a minute here.
Was it a little anxious there?
Okay.
Okay, just so everyone's clear, the motion that's on the floor is an amendment to Counselor Bennett's motion to refer the issue of the implementation of fees and charges to the Finance Committee. And the motion that's on the floor is an amendment to Counselor Bennett's main motion that only would delay the implementation of this one current fee until January 1st, 2013.
That's correct.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
No.
Counselor Tesler is absent. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
No.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Cannon?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson? No. All right. Does it sound like the ayes have it? Motion carries. And we're back to-
Now the main motion is amended.
The substitute motion is amended.
We're back to the substitute motion as amended. That motion was made by Counselor Bennett. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
No. All right. Then there is a motion on the floor. Either Counselor Bennett or our attorney Randall Tosh would like to repeat the motion so we know for sure.
Counselor Bennett should repeat the motion.
All right, Counselor Bennett?
Who's taking notes? Well, the motion as amended is to delay implementation of the back, whatever the-
Backflow prevention device fee.
Backflow device fee, and refer the issue of fees and the policy direction of the council to the Finance Committee with a possible work session in the future.
Okay, I need clarification. Did you say to delay the fee?
Yeah, it's now amended by Counselor Clem's motion to delay the fee.
To delay the fee until-
Delay the fee and refer the broader issue of fees and their adopt, you know, their development, their adoption, the whole question of fees to the Finance Committee.
Okay. All right. All right. We can do a roll call vote. Will the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett?
No.
The, all roll call votes are rotated through the council, not just ordinances?
Yeah.
I'm rotating.
Now I'm, I'm just back now to-
She's-
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Bennett?
No.
Counselor Tesler is absent. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
No.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Cannon?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson? No. All right, sounds like the ayes have it. And the no votes are Counselors Bennett and Dickey and Mayor Peterson. All right.
Seven minutes to spare.
Yay. Do we have further business? All right. I have no further business to come before the council. We are adjourned to an executive session, which will be held in the City Manager's office.
Yeah, party aye.